Welcome to everybody. We get this meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners November fourteenth. We call it Order. And due to the number in attendance, which we're glad to see, we've been advised that we're over the fire limit capacity in this building. So we've opened the meeting. We'll ask everybody to move all your belongings upstairs to courtroom A.
Yes, sir. Court four.
And there's elevator and stairwell. And then we'll join you all shortly and we'll conduct no business until we reconvene up there. Thank you all. I want to convene you, but I appreciate your cooperation. We'll reconvene this meeting. Starting out on the agenda, under announcement, two A, annual opioid funding meeting will be included in December twelfth, regular meeting. Both municipalities, Ms. Franklin has invited to attend. But thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Part of the opioid funding guidelines, we have to have at least one annual meeting a year. This will be the first one. You know, Macon County, like many counties across the state, we're very, still very early on in this process. We've been working with the Southwestern Commission, they will be in attendance as well, to share progress on some of the regional efforts that they're making. So looking forward to just briefing the municipalities and getting any feedback we can at that meeting.
And as of right now, Macon County has not expended any of their opioid severance threat.
Correct.
Two B, the annual recognition of employees and presentation of service awards will be held five o'clock on December the twelfth before the regular meeting next month. Court four. Two C, a video presentation of the proposed Franklin High School design is available on the website at www.maconnc.org. If we've lost them, we'll observe them all in silence. And if she'll release an official lease, it's all available. Everybody. Yes, sir.
I can follow the sounds. I'd like to go to mine A and B. We have two broadband presentations tonight. We've got somebody here who came from Atlanta, and we've got another man from Charlotte with Raleigh, and my captain, go first. I know it's a for the topic, but let me get on my way. Go ahead and do the presentations.
Anybody got an issue with it? All right. Chair, Mr. Sheil.
Mike, we come up to the title here.
All right, good evening. I'm Mike Tankham with Charter Communications, also known as Spectrum. I know I had a presentation with this change of venue. Were you able to show that presentation?
Well, I'm standing here in this area. I can walk in, so we do have your booth.
Right. So there was a packet given to each of you prior to the meeting. Give me that packet is the present, our copy of the electronic presentation I was going to make. So let me go through that and I'll walk you through it page by page on that. All right, again, I'm Mike Tankham with Charter Communications. I'm our Director of Government Affairs. I'm based in Charlotte and really cover the western third of North Carolina for Charter Communications. Now, sometimes people hear Charter Communications, they also hear Spectrum. They're kind of going, is it the same, is it different? Charter Communications is the official company name. We sell products under the Spectrum brand name. So Spectrum Video is a product that Charter Communications sells. An analogy I use is Procter and Gamble sells Crest toothpaste, Charter sells Spectrum products. So we came to, or we're coming to Macon County as a result of our ARDOF Rural Development Opportunity, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund that was awarded in 2021. Just kind of do a quick recap of what ARDOF is. The FCC put together a reverse auction bid process. And what that means is various, the various programmers such as ourselves, providers such as ourselves, we would make a bid to say, we want to service a census block and we would need X amount of funding from the federal government to make it work. So the one that requests the least amount, or we're going to put the most of our own money into it, was the winner. So we were a big winner across the state of North Carolina and specifically here in Macon County. So we won over eight thousand, eight thousand one hundred ninety-one locations. And when we talk about location, that could be a home, be a business, it could be an anchor institution, or something along that line. So in doing that, we'll be building these to the census blocks that were part of ARDOF. And the census block meant is that there were no people served in that census block that had more than twenty-five by three level of service according to the FCC. If there was a hundred people in that census block and one, two of them didn't have that level of service, they were ineligible for that program. So it had to have zero people in that census block. So that's what we went after when we bid and we won eight thousand one hundred ninety-one. To build that, we're going to have to build about eight hundred thirty-three miles of fiber to the home plant. And in doing that, through our subsidy of the federal funds, not counting what Charter's putting in, we're getting over nine million dollars in federal funds to do that. So if we flip to the next page of the presentation, there's the map showing the areas of Macon County that we, where we will be building to. And if there is a resident that's covered, or a location that's covered in that green, we will be serving them. Even if it's the last one at the end of a road, it's an obligation we make to the FCC and we're going to be making that service available. I wanted to talk a little bit about the construction process that we're going through right now. If you look at the construction, it's a little bit like an iceberg. It's the analogy we use. There's a lot of stuff below the surface that you just don't see, but then when you break the water, then you'll see some activity. So it really starts, the first, after we've won the award, the first thing we do is do a walkout. So what that means is, when we did the bid, we did it from, I'm looking at GPS and other electronic information, we did desktop analysis and costing, and that's what we won the bid on. Now that we've got it, we've got to put the boots on the ground and walk up and down the lines to make sure we can, we know where everything is, so we can get the ball rolling on that. Then after we know where the infrastructure is, then we have to do the design. And this is going to be saying, okay, where's our hub going to be? Where's our nose going to be? Where are we going to run the fiber lines? Is it going to be aerials? Is it going to be underground? We have a railroad crossing, so we have river crossings or creek crossings and so on. So that's part of the design. So both the walkout and the design are in process. So the game plan for us is, since we don't have a footprint in Macon County right now, we're going to be coming out of our hub that's up in Waynesville. And so we're going to be building down through Haywood and then into Jackson and then into Macon County. So that's kind of the method how we're doing that. We've already well underway in both Haywood and Jackson. We've got areas that are complete that we're moving in, so we're making progress as we move forward. Then we'll have to do the permitting. And when we talk about permitting, we prefer to go aerial and to make attachments to existing poles rather than going underground. There's a lot of rocks, there's a lot of unknown when you go underground. So we have to make a permit application to the owner of the poles, be it Duke or RMC or whoever it might be. And then in doing that, we have to go in, look at it to see if there's room on the pole for us to attach. Other permits that we have to get are the NC DOT and if there are some other ones that might, that we might need, we would certainly do. In the, associated with the permitting process, is something that's called make ready. And when I talk about make ready, I'm talking really primarily about poles. So under NESC, National Electrical Safety Commission, there are requirements that we have to meet. So the pole is so many feet tall, the power company is going to be at the top, there has to be eighteen inches of clearance between the power company and the next line. Next line is generally us. Then there has to be another twelve inches below, the other communications, be it a phone company, be it Windstream, be it another fiber provider, whoever it is. And then you have to have a certain amount of clearance above the road, and normally it's about eighteen feet. So if that pole's not tall enough, or there's not the proper separation, the power company or the owner of the pole has to come in and fix that pole for their portion. The other attached, people that are attached to the pole have to adjust theirs to create the space. Many times, the pole isn't large enough or strong enough to handle the weight of the new equipment or create that, so a new pole might have to be set. So all of that has to be done before we can do our work. So that whole process is called make ready, or making that pole ready for us to be able to attach to. That can be very expensive, it can be very time consuming. But we work with power companies and that's all part of the permitting process. One of the other issues that we've started to run into, and this is really just more of an FYI in case you hear something about it, is in underground area, especially in private developments or small HOAs or larger HOAs for that matter, are private water systems. We're finding that many times it's very difficult to locate private water systems because they are really just PVC type things. So if you put a locate on it, you can't locate because there's no tracer line to be able to locate on it. So we have to work with the HOAs to come up with a solution to be able to locate it so as we put our fiber lines underground, we don't damage their networks. So that's another piece of the puzzle that we have to work out as well. So then we finally get to that point. Now we're, all that work has really been, the iceberg has been below water. Now we're going to get to water level and moving up. And now you're going to start to see the physical construction. And here in, in Macon County, our game plan is to start second quarter of next year with the physical construction. That's where you're going to start seeing some fiber lines being put on poles or possibly underground, depends what with it, the design calls for. So we're going to get that rolling. Now, these dates I'm giving you are all, I'm going to qualify them as, they are subject to change because of things that are beyond our control. It could be weather, we have another pandemic, you may have a snowstorm, or equipment shortages or something like that. But if everything goes according to plan, we'll be starting second quarter of next year to get this thing going. And then we will be completing the activation of the eight hundred and thirty-three miles for the over nine thousand locations by the second quarter of 2027. So that's our timeline, that's our plan at this point in time. Again, all subject to change, but that's where, that's where our timetable calls for at this point in time. Let me pause there for questions before I move on to the rest. Okay, they're moving through there. So if, for the folks who are interested in knowing, are they included, are they not included, and so on, for the information on timeline table, we at Spectrum have created a website. I've given a page there. It's www.spectrumruralexpanion.com. And the screenshot of what the website looks like, it'll come up and it'll say, excuse me, and it'll ask you for their address and they can put that information in and it'll tell them if it's included, if it's not included, or other information. Now, at the very bottom, you can see, not all ARDOF locations have been loaded into database. We have found if there have been some errors in this, the information is good as we have, then there could be some errors because of what we've gotten from the FCC or what our walkout has shown. So I don't want this to be the gospel and everybody's going to go by, but this is a good indication. And we do try to keep this up to date. So once we get moving with the ARDOF and get that going, there was another program that the state of North Carolina did through ARCA funds called Great Grant. And I think our friends from Frontier won here, and I think she's going to give you an update on what they're doing. But we did not bid on the Great Grant. And the reason was that they had to two-year build on the window. We knew we could not get it done in two years because of that progression of moving from Waynesville through Haywood down to Jackson to get here. We just didn't have the timeline to be able to get it done. So we did not bid on the Great Grants. However, the next level that's coming out from the state is called Completing Access to Broadband or CAT. That's going to be their next round to try to fill in other areas that were not covered by ARDOF, that were not covered by Great. And I think that there could be newer rules associated with that. The rules haven't completely been formulated and the state is still updating their maps. They've been telling us that we're going to get the rules out this summer. Well, we're past summer. So hopefully anytime soon, we're going to be getting this. We are very interested in working with your broadband committee and the county on that to look at other areas that are beyond what we're already doing with ARDOF and that. Another program that the state has is called StockCAT. That one is still unclear exactly how they're going to be using those funds. I think those are, intended what the name says. Where they find holes, they want to use this to help fill in holes. So more to come on that one. And then the final one I listed here is the B program, or Broadband Equity and Deployment. Excuse me. This is the federal fund where that came out, where there's forty-two point five billion dollars across the nation. In North Carolina, I got one point five billion dollars. The state and the federal government are still working on coming up with the rules of how this is going to happen. I know the state's already submitted some of the information required to the federal government. Then behind that, there's going to be a couple more back and forth between the state. So what we anticipate, and this is a Mike Tank guess, is that maybe next fall, we're going to be seeing the rules and the timeframe for applications. So that's on the horizon, but we don't necessarily know exactly all the details on that yet. Then the, really the last page, what we talked about tonight, and this is just a highlight, is once we start offering service, this is what we're going to be offering. Our standard is going to be three hundred megabit service. We have alternate five gig. We'll be offering gig services if folks want that. We'll be participating in the ACP or in the Affordable Connectivity Program through the federal government as long as, as long as they're doing and there's funds available. We'll be offering video services as well. Our standard programs, the multiple tiers of videos, lots on demand. We have our Spectrum app, you can use that. We have Spectrum News, which is, and we've expanded our news program to include all the mountain areas as part of our video programming for our own phone and also mobile phones. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on that because I think you're somewhat familiar with that. But that's really the presentation I have for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm not sure we'll see you again.
In the packet I've left you, you have my card, and there's also a bunch of other information. This is general information about Spectrum and Charter. So if you have any questions or something comes up, you do have my contact information, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis, we have a, in your agenda, we have, also we have it on our iPad. Sorry, we didn't get to display it out there. Can you have the same computer on?
Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'm Allison Ellis. I'm FCP of Business Development and Fiber Partnerships from Frontier. I lead up our Community Engagement Public Private Partnership Initiative. I wanted to start with a high-level overview of Frontier. I know it's a name that's familiar to you, and I wanted to update you where we are in the company at this point in time. We've been in the community, the Macon County community, for a long time as the traditional phone company. We originally deployed broadband services using DSL technology, leveraging our copper infrastructure to provide connectivity to residents. And when we first rolled that out, which was more than ten years ago, it was a good level of connectivity. But what we found happened is that people's utilization of broadband increased very rapidly, and we were just not able to keep up with the investment in our infrastructure that we needed to in order to meet the demand of our consumers. We found ourselves in a period of financial difficulty as a company, and we entered, negotiated restructuring with our creditors. That's a fancy way of saying we went through a bankruptcy process. We concluded that in May of 2021, so it's solidly in the rearview mirror for us as a company. But it was actually a really positive thing for us for a number of reasons. First and foremost, we eliminated ten billion dollars worth of debt. This is debt that was on our balance sheet, preventing us from being able to invest in upgrading our networks like we want to do for our customers, and, you know, prevented us from being able to borrow money. We emerged from the process as an entirely new company. We have an entirely new board of directors and an entirely new senior leadership team. I've worked with this company since 2010, and I can tell you, it's the most sophisticated management and board of directors that we've had in the company. The third very important thing that came out of the restructuring process is that we emerged with a very clear vision and strategy for the company that was very data-driven, had been vetted by our creditors and also by the bankruptcy court, under the standard that the company had a plan that would not lead it, that was not likely to lead it to future financial difficulty. That's what we call building the even America. And that is our initiative to build fiber-to-the-premises connectivity to as many locations in our footprint as quickly as possible. We actually publicly announced a goal of reaching ten million locations with fiber-to-the-premises by the end of 2025. We are already well, more than halfway there. And we made that public commitment prior to there being any of this ARCA money, IIJA money announced. And so we saw, see this point in time as a terrific opportunity for us to leverage what we are privately investing in expanding our fiber capabilities with some public funding to reach those locations that remain unserved or underserved today because they're a bit more expensive to reach and therefore harder to do without some public contribution. So when I say we are a company that is very different than where we were just three years ago, that's absolutely true. We are building fiber-to-the-premises hand over fist. We have a deployment machine that is really the envy of the industry. When you look at how much fiber we are actually deploying, it's on par with some of our peers that are much, much, much larger, like Verizon or AT&amp;T. Just in last quarter, we passed three hundred and twenty-two thousand locations with fiber. We're on track to meet, to pass more than one point three million locations this year. That's on top of one point two million that we passed last year. We, also in this last quarter, we announced positive consumer revenue for the first time. That's a big milestone for the company that we're very proud of. In terms of our fiscal situation, we also have three point four billion dollars of liquidity, so we have good financial capability to continue our investment in expansion of fiber. We added almost eight thousand customers just last quarter. This is a twenty percent increase year over year and is a demonstration that our fiber product is really resonating with our customers and resonating in the marketplace. We are taking our network from a point where we have not been able to provide the connectivity that people really need to do the modern applications and uses, and we are leapfrogging them ahead into a network that is providing the connectivity, not that they need for today or yesterday, but that they will need well into the future. When we, when we think about fiber, I think a lot of people are familiar with fiber as a technology. It's very different than our copper facility that we're upgrading, in a couple of key ways. So first and foremost, it's not distance sensitive. Copper is, is just because of the physics of the technology, the further you are from the, from the point of aggregation of our network, so think the center of town, the more the signal degrades. So the further out you get, the lower the speed capability, the more that you experience unstable connections. Fiber does not have that issue. Fiber is not distance sensitive, so it doesn't matter if you're a hundred feet from our central office or a thousand feet or a mile, you're going to get the level of connectivity that you, the service deal that you select from us. The other thing is that fiber is a passive technology. So that means you only have to have power at either end of the connection, so at our central office and at the end-user location. If you have power at both ends, you're going to have connectivity. Right now in a copper network, it's a line-powered network, so there has to be power at, all along the path of transmission. And there are a lot of points where that power can fail, particularly in a rural community, you know, the rural communities of Macon County. So we eliminate that difficulty when we deploy fiber. The other thing is fiber is scalable. So what we are deploying today in networks is ten gig symmetrical capable, but it envisions much higher speeds. We've already been testing twenty-five gig symmetrical to, in order to meet the need that we all know is coming. Nobody's using a ten gig symmetrical today on a residential basis, but as we continue to introduce all sorts of digital capabilities into our lives, this level of capacity is going to be needed in the future. The benefits of fiber, you know, they're well, they're well studied, well understood. There's the personal benefit to the family, increased work, remote work opportunities, increased educational opportunities. There are the benefits to the community, greater economic development in the community, higher property values. And these are, this is a very virtuous cycle, and it's one of the key reasons that we're investing in fiber. We were a big participant in the CAP two program, which cat locations in and around this area. And quite honestly, that was a disappointment as a public program for everyone involved. It was a disappointment for communities who did not get the level of service that they thought they were going to get. It was a disappointment for companies like Frontier because the program funded ten-one service when ten-one service from the, from the very start of the program was considered to be not broadband speeds. And it was a disappointment for the FCC because there was a lot of money invested in networks that were not able to grow with the internet. So fiber eliminates all of those issues. In terms of our product offerings, so another key benefit of fiber is that it enables much higher speeds. So we have four speed deals right now. Five hundred symmetrical, one gig symmetrical, so a thousand megabits up, a thousand megabits down, two gig, two gig symmetrical, and five gig symmetrical. Now, one gig symmetrical is our sort of flagship product. That's what a lot of our customers purchase. We price that at a very competitive rate. It's currently being offered for fifty-nine ninety-nine. We price our products at a national level, so even if a particular household or location doesn't have competition at that location, they get the benefit of a competitive price because we have priced it based on market, so we have a lot of competition. We don't require contracts with our customers. We don't need to because fiber is the premier product and it's the premier experience. So customers who take our fiber services stay with us. We also introduced the Aero Pro Six router, which is, uses the latest Wi-Fi standard, and it provides a much more robust in-home Wi-Fi experience. So people don't have instances where they experience dead spots in their home. And of course, they can add extenders if they want to bring connectivity out to their bar or something like that. Like other companies, we also have a lot of other services that you can buy on top of the core broadband service. We've partnered with YouTube TV to bring a TV experience to our customers. We don't offer a linear TV experience anymore like a cable company. That's just not how people are watching media content anymore. YouTube TV has all of the channels that customers, it's most likely linear experience, all of the channels that customers want, and we are able to offer that at a discounted price to our customers because of our relationship with YouTube. So we are coming into the community through the Great Grant program, so I So I did want to recognize your broadband committee. They have worked in collaboration with Frontier in order to put forth a grant application that was funded by the state. It is a reflection of how important broadband is to the community. We very much appreciate the partnership. We, I have been involved in a lot of these programs across a multitude of states. And I can tell you the number one way that grants get, applications get selected for grants is the existence of a public-private partnership. So thank you very much. We are very much looking forward to getting connectivity into the community. Our grant award was for $3.7 million. The county contributed $50,000. Frontier is going to contribute $615,000. So the total project cost is about $4.4 million. That's for 2,700 funded locations. So in order to be fundable, you have to meet certain criteria as unserved or underserved, meaning you didn't have 253 connectivity or 100 over 20. When we look at that grant project though, just to give a little bit of context for you, as I mentioned, Frontier is doing this major fiber-to-the-premises expansion. And so our intention with these grants is always to complement them with our private investments so that we are extending connectivity to a much larger cohort of customers and locations within the community at the same time that we're doing the 2,700 grant-specific locations. As my colleague from Charter mentioned, I think the iceberg is a good analogy. So the way the project works, it goes through multiple phases. It starts with the project commencement. And in this instance, the project officially commenced when we signed the grant agreement with the state of North Carolina, which was on May 10th of 2023. It then moves into a detailed design, detailed engineering phase where we really put the meat around the project and specifications for how we're going to architect our network. At that point, once it's completed, we do create bill of materials. We put in our equipment orders. And that process is an extended window. So we feel very good about our access to fiber, our access to equipment, manpower. We've spent, you know, the better part of the year re-insourcing and diversifying our supply chain. But this is equipment that is made. It's not equipment that we can go in and purchase from Best Buy. So we put in an order and then it is manufactured. And when it's delivered to us, then that is when we start to move into the construction things. So this project has a 24-month construction type of project timeline. The active construction phase for us is actually pretty short. As an existing provider in the community and a traditional telephone company, our infrastructure on poles is the lowest on the pole, so we can just overlap the fiber onto our existing poles. And then of course, we underground where we need to, where there's conduits and where we have to place that. But in general, when we look at our project deployment, you know, it happens in a fairly compressed time period. And then we open the locations for sale. So we make our services available to the residents on a rolling basis. So it's not, it's not that the first person is going to get connectivity at the, all people are going to get connectivity on the last day of the project. It's throughout the project, there will be rolling phases of connectivity. In your packet, I do have a map where I set out the phases of the project. There's going to be six phases. This is to give you sort of a directional sense of how the project is going to unfold. As we go out into the active construction phase, there are always field conditions that we have to accommodate and they can change the phases or they can, they can, you know, make one phase slightly smaller and one phase area larger. But I thought this would give you a good sense of how the project will develop over time. I won't go through the information about the CAB and the stopgap and the BE program other than to say there still is a lot of, a lot of grant eligibility within the county. We would certainly look to partner with the county again to make sure that as many people as need to be connected in the county are connected. Across the state, there are about 500,000 locations that are unserved and underserved. In the county of Macon, based on the most recent mapping, mapping is always a very fluid situation because it's only correct as of the day that it's provided. Excuse me, I've got some. There are 4,687 grant-eligible locations in the county. So that will be both in the CAB program likely, stopgap program and then onto the BE program. The BE, there's a lot of locations right now still in the county 3,400 that are unserved. The BE program prioritizes unserved locations in areas of historic, high poverty. And so to the extent that there are those locations within the county, they would be on the priority for BE funding when that happens, which will not happen until definitely right into next year. I also did provide a map for you all just to give you a sense of where the grant-eligible locations are within the county. It's a very rough map, but the yellow dots are locations that are included in our joint Great Grant and then the green dots are where there is future opportunity for grant-funded projects. And then we do have a Where's My Fiber site. This is a site where customers can, residents and businesses can enter their address, determine if there's fiber available, also register their interest. And so if there's not fiber available yet, this puts them on a list for notification of when fiber becomes available to their community, their location. So I'm open for any questions if you have that.
Bill McGeady. Bill, I heard the comments you had a while ago. Do you have a question?
I was hoping to get that address. I looked Spectrum up and they gave it and registered. Do you have that address that we can? Bill? Bill?
Okay, I'll give. Is that Charter or Spectrum? Spectrum? Any questions to Frontier? Question?
You underwent bankruptcy in 2021. What happened to the investors who believed in you then? And now with your sales pitch to us in the present, what is to protect us from having the same thing happen in 2024?
Yeah, so our investors, it was a negotiated restructuring. So our investors exchanged their debt for shares in the new company. So that is a reflection that we have put together a plan for the future of the company that they endorse. As I said, the, our strategy had to be approved by the bankruptcy court in order for us to exit that process. And that strategy was that not only by our internal experts, but also by our creditors and also by the bankruptcy court. So it is a very well-vetted plan for the company. We understand and are very clear-eyed about the fact that, you know, some of you may have, may have service from us today that is not delivering the connectivity that you need to do everyday activities. And we are trying as hard as we can to deploy as quickly as possible. I can tell you, fiber will totally change your broadband experience. It does not have any of the issues that DSL service does. And so we're, you know, we're trying as fast as we can through the Great Grant period. You will see progress in the community over the next 24 months. And, you know, all I can say is when the fiber comes available to you, I'd ask you to try it. And I think you'll be pleased and you'd stay with us because it's the premier level of connectivity. And in fact, when we deploy fiber in Macon County, you know, residents in this county are going to have better connectivity than people who live in big cities because not everybody in big cities has access to fiber today.
Clarifications in terms of competing companies? How do you all interact in a small space like Macon County?
We compete. So, you know, we're different than the cable companies. Cable companies deploy their initial infrastructure, so their initial cable infrastructure, based on a franchise that they negotiated with the local community. In general, cable companies stayed in town, right? They picked the most densely populated areas and that's where they served. As the traditional LET, the local telephone company, we actually provided service across our entire footprint, which in this instance is all of the county of Macon County. So a much larger footprint. But, you know, to the extent that we're both doing expansion projects, I mean, that's the nature of competition. So we're, we feel good about where we stand in a head-to-head.
This is helpful. Bill? Thank you.
Thank you.
Say "thrill" back to Atlanta.
Yes, I really appreciate it.
And could we have one officer? I'm not sure if she knows where, if she's part of that thing like that. Could you ask for her?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I should say, I'm headed to Atlanta, but I'm actually from North Carolina. So I live in the Durham area.
Okay.
Just flying out of Atlanta tomorrow morning, so.
Oh, thanks for the word.
Is one of them a sister?
All right. Thank you all for bearing witness there. Think they stand well thin. Over back to our public hearings. If we have any opinions. No public hearings tonight, public comment in period.
Yes, sir. Anyone else like to sign up for a public comment?
Here's the timekeeper. Here's the gold keeper. Let me tell you what we got there. Well, Quellen, time's up, that's one hour.
One hour.
Okay, public comment period. We have Quellen Pickle signed up. We generally go five minutes. No less than 45 minutes. So the way we do this, feel free to come before this board if there's anything that you have to say. Doesn't mean that you will elicit a response from any members of this board. But we take a lot of things under advisement. We don't, if we have this speech, we don't get into a give-and-take that much. But we request that you be civil and pick on, if you're going to pick on somebody, pick on the whole board. Don't pick on anybody. So first off, Norrell Kirkland. And Mr. Cheryl will be the timekeeper.
Not me, it's great.
As soon as they start.
Mr. Chairman, you knew exactly what you were doing getting us up here. I was all set to speak to you down below. I sat down and here is this book. You can be happy, just avoid exasperating the commissioners. How did you know I was coming?
Always entertaining.
In, back around 2004, I was bicycling. And you may remember where the airport is. There's also a large field where cows graze. And I surprised a coyote who was there checking out the cows. And he came so startled, ears back, just ran right alongside me and then disappeared up into the hill. But that was short potatoes compared to what happened about a month later when I was out in my, on my driveway and the room was that gorgeous gold it becomes in the summertime. The air was still and beneath a hemlock tree, there was the full outline of a coyote. And I'll tell you, when, when you're on your driveway and it's up here on a hill, it looks as big as that podium behind you. He didn't think I saw. He just stayed absolutely still. But I just said, "Norrell, it's time to get into the house." You may remember the fires that we had in 2016. It used to be that I could sit on my porch at night and listen between 12:00 and 2:00 a.m. All the coyotes come down from the surrounding hills and they yap and howl. All of that disappeared after the fires. But there was still a wonderful time when I was bicycling at the Tsallee March at Fox Ridge and there were two bobcats that had taken up residence there. And I would bicycle back and forth over three or four years and they just would let me go, never bother me. But one day, I came and coming down the road was a panther. And he got really confused by a person going around and with oil, all the smells on my bicycle. And he climbed a pine tree and I've never seen paws that big. It was just a wonderful experience. I spoke to him, he listened and he disappeared. And then all the towers came in for the light stanchions. And at that time, somebody got rid of the white lights. So what do I do in the absence of such stimulation? I look at the view. That's why we live here, almost all of us. It's just a gorgeous view. But the most iconic view on, in our county is on 28, when you are just short of Sanders Town Road where a river bend comes out. You can look to the east and see Goat Mountain and all the way to Yellow in Jackson County. And you look to the west and you've got Wyatt, the Cary, Burning Town, Copper Ridge. It's just breathtaking, whether you're looking at the sunrise or the sunset. But a real estate agent bought some of the land that was controlling that view on the west. I spoke to them twice. I even emailed the owner of the property who lived down in Louisiana. And I appeared before you twice giving warnings when Mr. Kate was chairman. And then when you were saying, "Buy some land, keep it so that people can travel that view, come to Macon County and see everything." I've been ignored. Houses going up, when they put a fence up, you're not going to be able to see a thing. But you still have one more chance. One of our fabulous members, Phil Drake, bought land, has developed it last year, he's opening it for sale now. And if you go to the very top, he and I decided that there were about 10 acres up on the top that have not been cleared in any way. If you guys come forward and meet with the town planners, I don't know where they are, but the, you know, the head of the town council is here, and buy that and develop it as a park for all Maconians to be able to come and have a picnic. Maybe not spend the night. That would take some work to figure out the regulations. But to bring the kids and the family and be able to see all the way to the Great Smoky Mountains. After all, it's called Tennessee View Drive. It's waiting for you. Don't let this chance slip away. Come forward and buy it for all residents.
Hey, the lawyers.
Good evening, how are yous?
Good.
I want to address some things this afternoon that has been swirling all over Facebook and things that's being twisted a little bit. And there's a lot of people out there that don't understand where some of these numbers are coming from. It's about the high school. I know a lot of people says, some people says they want it built down on the Georgia road. Some people says they want it built on the Civil Road. We've already gone too far to really take a step back. But, and I know you're probably not going to answer this question, but people's come to me and asked me, "Where does the, is it a 33% more increase?" I encourage them to come to the commissioners meeting to get the full facts. And I've tried to explain to them. But when I try to explain to them, And I've tried to explain to them, but when I try to explain to them, they say, "So it's thirty-three more, thirty-three dollars on a hundred?" No, it's not. And I try to tell them that, you know, the meal rate was at forty percent, and I may be wrong on the numbers a little bit, but they went down to twenty-seven percent. I said, "Taxes may go back up to thirty-three percent, but that's three, three cents on the dollar, or three cents on a hundred." So I think that the commissioners or somebody needs to address some of this and see where we're getting all these numbers. People don't need to be divided. Lord, we got enough of that in Washington. Uh, we got enough of that in the United States, we sure don't need it here in Macon County. The high school is very important. Um, we definitely need it done. Hey, I, it's been forty-one years since I graduated high school at Franklin. And now my, my kids just went through, my grandkids is going through, I got one graduating this year. But we need that new high school, we need it for nothing else but the handicap. I mean, it's bad that they get caught in the rain a lot of time, 'cause they're just not fast enough to go from class to class, and a lot of classes are outside, or you gotta go from building to building. But we need to address some of these concerns that some of these people have, not, we don't need to divide them any worse than some of them are. Hey, I was confused myself, and I did talk to John, so I was confused myself on some of these numbers. But we need to just address it so people can, I don't want taxes going up either, but, you know, I'm willing to pay, swallow that three cents to get a new high school. Whether we get the funding, the grant or not, we need to figure it out. If we keep putting it off, it's never gonna happen. And then the school's gonna fall in on the teachers' heads. So we don't need that either. But kids can, you know, just address some of these numbers, these concerns. It's a big concern out there. And I mean, there's a lot of people don't want the high school now because they think that our tax is gonna go up an additional thirty-three percent or thirty-three dollars on a hundred, I don't know, but we just need to address them and educate them so we get this going. Thank you. Some says it's an additional thirty-three percent, some says it's, they think it's thirty-three, thirty-three more dollars on a hundred, which is gonna be outrageous in taxes, so, you know, if you're paying seven, eight hundred dollars taxes, it adds up after a while, but that's, that's just the thing. We just need to address some of these numbers to some of these people, educate them.
All right. Ms. Norris, um, I know a lot of that is referenced to some Facebook posts that I did questioning, uh, folks out here about the high school. The numbers are skewing all over the place. We were presenting a hundred and twenty million dollar school, okay? So one meal, manager, correct me if I'm wrong here, one meal creates one point, one million dollars? Okay. So when we were at forty and then with this revow, the property values went up, so naturally to have revenue neutral, the, uh, the military has to come down. But realistically, a hundred and twenty million dollar high school financed for twenty years, what is that, six million dollars without a, without the interest rate? So if one meal creates one million dollars, that's six meals without interest. So that's six meals added on to your, uh, to your taxes without interest. So realistically, uh, the numbers with this, if we have a sixty million dollar grant, then we're gonna be financing sixty million plus the, uh, the other loan that the county already has. So there's gonna be a consolidation loan there at approximately a hundred and sixty million, if we don't get the grant. So if you do the math, the numbers are right. The finance guy came in and told us that we were gonna have to raise taxes without the grant, based on the numbers that he had, eight to ten points. So if you raise the taxes ten points on a twenty-seven billion, that's thirty-three And that's, I mean, now, there's no scare tactic by this. It's the truth. And we have to present exactly what we have. We don't have a grant, we're not guaranteed a grant. A lot of people are saying, "We need a new high school, we need a new high school, we need a new high school." How are we gonna pay for that high school? So you gotta be realistic. There's no scare tactics there. It's get prepared, if we're going to do this new school, that's what we're facing. There's gonna have to be a tax increase. And that's, that's all I can add to that, but until we actually get hard numbers, we can't really discuss a whole lot with any of this.
So Hazel, I wanted to go talk to Lori about this, and these are just some of the numbers I was given. Hopefully this will make it a little bit more clear for everyone, and if I'm making a mistake on anything, Derek, please correct it. Without the grant, our tax, our mileage rate right now currently is at point two seven. Without the grant, in order for us to build a high school without the grant, we'd have to take that mileage rate from point two seven to point three oh. That's an eleven point eight percent tax increase. And even at point three oh, we're still the lowest tax rate in the whole state of North Carolina. So if we understand that, and that's without the grant, that's no grant at all, okay? The quarter cent sales tax that didn't pass last year, if that would have passed, we would have only had to raise the mileage rate by one point six. With the grant, there should be no tax increase whatsoever to be able to build the high school. Now, to even be more clear on that, with the grant, the grant, let's say we get a sixty million dollar grant. If we choose to build phase one out of the fund value, which is what, maybe fourteen million, thirteen, fourteen million, okay? We're not financing a four hundred and twenty million dollars. And I'm gonna stay pretty optimistic that we're gonna get this grant. I can't say for certain, but I'm just saying on my, on my end, I'm gonna stay pretty optimistic with the fact that we're gonna get the grant. But even without the grant, the numbers that I got from Lori and from Derek was, we'd have to raise the mileage rate from point two seven to point three oh. And again, even at point three oh, that still puts us at the lowest tax rate, not one oh, but the absolute lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Antoine. Based on, and what Commissioner Antoine, the numbers we provided are the numbers that was provided to us from Davenport, who is our financial advisors in May of twenty twenty-three, that are, that is the latest information we have with respect to that hundred and twenty million dollar project. And it, you know, you're not gonna be generating the funding for the principal and interest payment on that loan in its entirety from the tax rate increase. You know, we made a, we made a, a budget increase this year to our debt service fund. We were, we had eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars there that we set aside in the debt service fund that is also going to go to that principal and interest payment, along with other funding that will become available as we continue to pay off debt as the years go on. So there's other thing, there's other sources of funds coming into our capital improvement plan, which is what all this is based off of, and what our financial advisors briefed us on, which you're, you're quoting the scenarios from their book there, which we talked about. There's other sources of funding other than the tax rate increase that are gonna factor into that number. And, and when all those are looked at, based on, again, based on the, at the time in May when, when the financial advisors came to us, and we have that, uh, information, they provided each board member with a copy of that. And basically, it outlines those three scenarios, which Commissioner Antoine has just highlighted there. And that was taken into consideration after the revaluation and everything like that. And yes, those three scenarios are, that is the latest information we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Nancy. Yeah, I'm sorry, call.
I, all the class they want.
Oh.
You're absolutely right, Hazel. We need to, you know. Good evening. What's my last name? Baste. And it's November, so I'm based a turkey. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm an optimist. I believe that you all are doing the very best job you can with the information that you have at hand. And I sincerely think that you want what's best for the people in Macon County. I, I believe that's why you're in those seats. But here we are again, creeping towards leaving Fontana Regional Library, so I gotta stand up and say something about it. But I'm gonna implore you not to waste your time trying to fix something that isn't broken. The FRL system works perfectly without anyone trying to overhaul the system. After several sleepless nights staring at the ceiling while my husband and dogs gnaw next to me, I have a plan that I think is gonna get you out of this pickle. My proposal is that we work together, county commissioners and citizens, and that we solve actual problems that exist in our county, not imaginary ones. So why don't we get together and attend public events together and talk with the citizens of Macon County? That way we can broaden all of our perspectives and truly serve for the good of all. I know Gary Shields does this all the time, I see him at every event, talking to people and finding out what's important to them. We can all do this a little bit more. Working together, the commissioners and the community can help Sheriff Holbrooks here and Chief Holland to do their jobs to combat drugs and human trafficking. Let's work together, let's, let's bring some more unity, right, Hazel? We need unity instead of divisiveness. We can create partnerships to improve healthcare so that expectant mothers don't have to risk their baby's lives driving or being driven to Silva to give birth. Can we, can we work on that and make that happen? Because now you can't give a birth in Macon County anymore. That's crazy. We're trying to move forward, not move backwards in time, right? How about helping citizens find safe housing that they can afford? There are so many people here in this county currently working on this issue, so let's all work together on it, let's make it happen. There's a huge group that meets, I monthly, that really wants to make it happen. And as many of you are, I'm a former business owner, and I understand how hard it is to own a business, just like running a county is like running a business. But what can we do to work together to promote business and development so that people here can make a living wage and support their families? What's happening for business development? How about Nantahala and Highlands? Sometimes it seems to me that these communities get left out of the big picture and aren't as important as Franklin, where it's talking about what's going on here. And let's remember, they're part of our community, but they're more remote, so they have additional challenges for the school and community center improvement that we need to pay attention to. And contrary to what some people believe, paying for schools does fall in your laps. There's plenty of ways to raise the property, instead of raising property taxes, grants, we were talking about grants. I looked at Grant Watch today, right now there are currently thirteen hundred grants available for capital projects for municipalities, for their schools and their programs for education. Thirteen hundred, just, just right off the bat today. And let's talk about what Mr. Antoine said, absolutely. You know, if, if we hadn't screamed so loudly about no new taxes last year, last November, maybe people wouldn't have been confused about what that meant, because I think that had we said, "Okay, well, we want the sales tax, because all those people that are coming up and down the highways, dropping their money in the hotels and the restaurants and all the things that they do to come, leaf look and gem mine and raft and all the wonderful things that we have here, why aren't we not taking more of their money, a sales tax for the schools? We could have promoted that better and people would voted it in, and we'd stop talking about raising Hazel's property tax, right? And how can we team up to preserve our clean water, our beautiful mountains, our history, our culture and our heritage? We've already got Main Spring, Cowie, Rickman, Nigwasi, Folk Heritage, Macon Historicals, Scottish Chartered, all these places, nonprofits that are doing such great work. Well, how can we support them? How can the commissioners and us in this room and the community support the people that are doing that work, that helps make this such a beautiful place? So I'm gonna ask you again, let's work together to solve our real problems. This county has many issues that need to be addressed, and Fontana Regional Library isn't one of them. Two more quick points regarding the proposed changes for terms for your positions. I can't quite figure out if you're trying to keep your jobs or get rid of them. If you're bored and you want out, then just resign. I'm not sure what that one's about. And I'm gonna go back to Hazel for a minute here. Making the Board of Education a political position seems to me that if you truly believe what you hear on Sunday morning, you'll be advocates for harmony and unity in our community, and you won't fall for those people that whisper plans to create rifts among the good people of Macon County. I hope you all have a peaceful and wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Scotty. The snoring husband. Hey, Dave. It's nice being, it's nice being on the scene, good. Been grateful for that my whole life, 'cause, anyway. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing us to have public comment. We appreciate that. And I'm also here to talk about the library proposals tonight. Library started in nineteen forty-four as a book, bookmobile, and I'm sure probably some of y'all may, maybe call your own enough to have visited a bookmobile at one time or whatever. But it seems to have been working pretty good for a long time, and, and their current statement right now is that they provide information on many topics, reading levels and interests, in the envi, in an environment that supports an individual's right to have access to ideas representing multiple points of view. This is right from their website, by the way. To meet this goal, as in Texas, they must protect the freedom of all to choose their own information. Access is provided readily and equitably to users regardless of race, ethnicity, nationality, religion, age, disability, gender, identity, gender expression and sexual orientation, uh, uh, socioeconomic status, or, or political views. So already they're stating that, and they're thinking that they're not, they're being politically neutral. It, it looks to me like one of the insinuations is that because it, it needs to be added in, that it needs to be in a politically neutral manner, that it hasn't been already, but that's just not the case. Also, uh, so I looked up the definition of irony. I'm, I'm a big time reader and I love words and everything. Irony is the expression of one's meaning by using language that normally signifies the opposite. So typically, this is for humorous or emphatic effect. So by taking, by, by taking the ability to nominate board members of the library away from the library board and putting it in the hands of the politicians can not be a politically neutral thing. So in other words, that's ironic statement to say that we're gonna take this away so that it can be less political, we're gonna give it to the politicians so it'll be less political. And it, it seems to me like, uh, let's see. If, if, so, and then if, if the, the new polit, the new proposal agreement states that the, that the library board members will be appointed by the commissioners, but we've already, the commissioners have already appointed the library board members, so that means that they've gotten kind of over their skis on this one. If you don't already have the ability to nominate them, I'm not sure how one could have been nominated. Seems to me like you gotta enact that policy first. I'm not, I'm not aware, but it seems to me like if you have a policy in place that says that the, that the board is elected by these certain people, and then the commissioners nominate somebody to this board, that, that wasn't actually properly set up. I don't, I don't know the crap worrying for it. I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware, like I said, but it just sounds to me like if you're trying to change it to something, but you already did something, you're trying to change it to, then that thing could not have happened. The other thing is, I keep hearing that it's all about doing this for the children. And I, I think the better way to actually do something for our children is to take care of our schools, let's get these teachers some more salaries. You know, I, I have a friend who's a teacher, she's, she's, she cannot earn any more money for the rest of her career because she is, is like maxed out in the salary. Well, why, why would she keep, my, my question is, why do you keep teaching? She does it 'cause she loves the kids. But if they couldn't afford it, if her husband wasn't working or whatever, they couldn't afford for her to just live off her teacher's salary. How are we gonna get our kids to be the best and brightest if we aren't able to hire the best and brightest to take care of our kids? So I think we should spend our time and energy trying to find better teachers and find ways to pay them better so that they'll actually be engaging and, and maybe make some of our, like, I saw the, the report card for our schools and it's, it's sad. I was, I was, I looked at it, I couldn't, I couldn't believe it, I thought, oh, you know, it'd be pretty good, but like, it's amazing what the report card states about our public school system. It's hurting. We have infrastructure, uh, issues that have been going on for years that now are gonna cost twice as much as they were gonna cost when they first came up. And then we're gonna kick it down the road a little longer, we're gonna try to find somebody that can do it for cheaper, but it's just gonna get more expensive. So anyway, thank you for your time, and I don't think I said anything else supposed to, but basically, I think we need to leave the library alone, and let's just move on with this thing. They've been doing a great job. Thank you, Scotty. Mary Ann Ingram? Mary Ann?
Welcome, James.
Thank you. I try to keep my words, try to make it understandable. Some of the commissioners, you know, I'm a senior attending, solid waste management in the county and work part-time. I've been with them almost 20 years now. And we feel like we're not part of the county employees. I've served in two wars. I've always tried to represent Macon County, but I feel like we've been left out. And I'm speaking mostly for myself when I say this because this is, the program that I work in, you probably already know, is sort of a revolving door. And people come and go real quick. I was probably about two years. But I'm speaking for maybe the two or three that's been there many, many years. I've almost been 20 years. There's another lady that's been there almost 20 years. And I'm just now up to about $4, $10 an hour. And Walmart starts out at $15 an hour. And I've never, and I was promised a longevity, I still remember, over a couple of years, but I never did get those. And if I'd only got like 25 cents over two years and eight years, it'd been $2, which have been, I think, reasonable. But, and I know this program, probably if I was under state or federal, I've never understood it. But we're not going to be able to get nothing done in that way, I don't think, for all of the children we run into. I think what changes we have to have would be the county lawyer brought up. And like, like I was giving, at the meeting about three years ago, they gave employees a change to pay 6% and they would pay 6% the county would. But most of the people didn't want it. I think because it's on fixed income, so they thought that a little bit, 6% is too much. That's all right. I voted that I could do that. And it fell through because they were looking at it as a group thing, which you can't on the program that we're in because everybody's in a different situation. And I even went to Mike Decker a couple of years ago and told him, well, I'll pay him a 6% all the way back. I'll even pay what the county would pay him. He said, no, we can't do that. Now, why couldn't you do that when they have all my paid vouchers all the way back? All they got to do is calculate it. I know that it don't have to be a retirement necessarily, but maybe a severance or lump sum when we leave. Because I'm looking, it might be happening 30 years or more and to go out with nothing. And we, we're out early in the morning before anybody else is. And next to medical and law enforcement, we're just as important because those three things has to be able to run in Macon County. If you close the centers down for two or three days, you're in bad trouble. No, it's not the most skilled work, but it is working with people and it's more of a labor job, but it's still needed. And I just ask it, it finally be looked at maybe, you know? And have, have your commissioners look at it and draw something up in the county and say, say somebody stayed five years, maybe they would get a small severance pay when they left. Say you put in 10 years, it'd be a little bit more. 20 years, it would be more. 25 years. But for this program, you're not going to be out much money because most people probably two years, three years that they're with it. I started out younger. I think it might have been set up maybe for older people, but it ended up with a lot of younger people, some younger people working there. And I don't think they, they was figuring that maybe, they was figuring maybe the rotation over a couple of years. I don't know, maybe, maybe that true. But I just feel like we, you know, we need to be looked at for the wanted, you know, put in all the years. Go ahead and ask some questions, come by. I'm ready, not a.
Hey, you and I talked about this a lot. And I understand personnel policies, retirements, pensions and all that. That's not my cup of tea. That's why I asked you to come down. You and I talked about it a whole bunch. And I'll have to perfect finish trying to talk with Mr. Owen, Mr. Decker when he was there, and your immediate supervisor. And I don't have the answer, James. You've got a legit.
I think it'll have to be in the county, in the county budget. Because if you talk to, we probably fall under the state or federal. Because if I go into Georgia or I go into, inside the counties in North Carolina, or I go into Georgia or South Carolina, and I talk to them, it's about the same program. So evidently, it might have been set up as a federal program and the county runs it. The different counties, I'm never had really understood it. But regardless of that, it doesn't mean you can't give something, you know, I mean draw up something. And I guess it has to be through the county lawyer. We have to draw up something, put something in place for us. Because I can't imagine going out with nothing after all these years.
Hey, well, let me work with, I will get a written response to you on your request. And the thing about, I've been here long enough, as I said about earlier, I remember when we opened the convenience, staff convenience centers, it used to be a lot more fun. You could drive by and just throw tires more or whatever. The staff convenience centers set up a part-time employee, not to exceed 20 hours per week, and that was to get away from having to pay all the associated benefits. That's been going for, I don't have any years, how long that been, James? That been 30 years?
Yeah.
And you all are the face of Macon. You'll interact with more people on your four, five-hour shift than most of us will interact with the citizenry in a week.
You got to have the right personality.
You got to, you got to have the right personality. And we're, we've got some good, some good employees and everybody in this room uses your services. We truly appreciate what you all do. And I don't know why we're still just stacking it with part-time employees.
Well, a lot of people, a lot of people just want that part-time. I'm, I'm have to speak for the ones that have been here for years like me, that you have to look at it a little different. It don't even have to be full-time. I'm just saying maybe draw up something. For the years you put in and calculate that, I would have equally like 10 years full-time. I've probably got more time now than some regular full-time employees. And some of them could go into a full-time position probably if somebody else quits. But we haven't had that choice. I mean, the way we're set up.
How long have you been there?
I've been working about, lived here, worked with the county, about 20 years.
First, I want to say thank you for your service, thank you for your service at this county. I don't mind to ask, I mean, what, have you, I understand now you didn't seek out full-time employment, but is there, is that an option? I mean, is.
It could, it'll help for that.
Oh, wait, may I ask if you work for a time? And I'm, you know.
Can we, I mean, right here as HR, are we allowed to, to create a position? What would we have to do to?
It's based on a budget.
Based on a budget? I think we bring this back up during a budget. I think that'd be a healthy conversation.
There's, there's different ways to do it. And it's like, say I put in 30 years for what I'm looking to do. From my age, I'm still very good, good health. Say I put in 30 years, that'd be equal like 15 years full-time and pay a benefit for a 15-year employee. I mean, that's one of the options. There's just a lot of different ways you could get this and pay. And that's what I was going to go.
Let's tie this up next to your darn budget. And let's have some, some healthy discussion. I've already, this is the second or third time I've seen you and I've been here for 20 years. So let's try to.
Well, thank you, thank you all. And I just want to say, I appreciate you all standing up to the, against the liberalism that is destroying our nation and indoctrinating our young children through the library, through the schools. And we got, we have to take a stand on it. There's going to be nothing else. Appreciate you all.
Over to Paige. Good evening. Welcome.
I'm here to talk about the agreement with the, about the library and a couple of things in particular. First, I want to start off by saying that I am of the same belief as a couple of the other people who have spoken, that the library wasn't broken and so that there's really no need to fix it. But I understand at the same time that this is a 10-year, a 10-year process that agreement has to be renewed. And so I want to address in particularly, in particular, two parts. And one is the one about the purpose statement for the library, for the regional board, including in a socially and politically neutral manner. And I think that that is a guiding principle that I definitely agree with and that anybody who works for the public in a volunteer basis or in a paid basis really should do so in a politically and socially neutral manner. And since it was inserted there, I would suggest that it also be inserted in section three, part five, where the county commissioners may select who the library board members are going to be. And it would be very easy to say on the community at large in a socially and politically neutral manner. And I believe I'm going to give everybody the benefit of the doubt and think that that's what we all do, but we know that that's not the case. That our political affiliation and our political beliefs do color a lot of our actions and a lot of our thinking. And especially since this board is only, has only one political affiliation, I do propose that that phrase be inserted into it. So that the commissioners have a guiding principle to adhere to, just as the library board members do. And then the other part I want to address is about withdrawing from the library, the process that it should take. And I believe that this paragraph was amended for the purpose of making it easier to withdraw from the library, from the regional library. And I think that that was one of the goals that was proposed by some people who were very dissatisfied with the way that the library was functioning. And it seems to me that this paragraph does not, has not had judicial review. I know that our agreement is not a contract, but the withdrawing unit may keep all assets and materials within their respective libraries. I do not know exactly how the collections in the library are there. But I believe some of those items were donated and some people may not want them to stay, to be changed in any way from their original purpose. I think that in addition to that, as part of the North Carolina library system, that some of those materials. At all. And so if this is the way that it is written, maybe some people, the idea, well, it's just going to say we are not satisfied, so let's withdraw and we're going to keep everything in the library building. That may not be the case. And unfortunately, I would like to hear what Mr. Brighton Howard has to say about this paragraph in particular. I am not able to stay, but I think it is an oversimplification of the process that would have to take place. And I think that it'd be proof the, everyone on this board to think, why was this written in this way? Is it to make it easier eventually to withdraw? And if that's the case, then that is the wrong objective for putting it in. Otherwise, I think that it was a good talking.
Thank you.
I am here to talk about item F under the new business. I would like to say first of all that I was born and raised in Franklin. I attended Franklin Elementary School and I graduated from Franklin High School. I would start, I would like to start out by asking a question. I think the people most concerned with this, about having the candidates for the school board to identify the political party that they are affiliated with, I think the people most concerned with this right now would be our current school board members. They are not here tonight. They are not here because they are at a meeting of the North Carolina Board of, the North Carolina Association for School Board Members. So I would like to respectfully suggest that if this issue is discussed or voted on again, that it be at a time when the current school board members could attend. Okay, second of all, I would like to argue against having candidates for the school board being required to identify the political party they are affiliated with. This is personal information. It could violate the candidate's privacy rights to have to make this information public. And it has nothing to do with the job of being on the school board. Taking care of our public schools is a bipartisan issue. It's not a democratic issue. It's not a Republican issue. So considering the large number of independent voters in Macon County, it's not sure, it's not a sure thing as to which political party could get the most members on the school board. I imagine it would go back and forth over the years. And a political party, what if one political party should get control of the school board? And it could be either one. But what if one political party should get control of the school board? A political party should not be determining what educational materials the teachers are able to use in the classroom, what lessons the teachers are able to teach, what books they are able to acquire for their students. These decisions should be left up to the teachers and in some cases, the parents. But the teachers are trained professionals. They are educators and they should have, they should be making these decisions, not a, a political party. Candidates for the school board should be elected based on their knowledge of the schools, their commitment to the students, the creativity that they have in addressing problems that the schools face, and these are, and creating the best possible educational environment for the students. This is what the candidates should be running on, not what their political party affiliation is. So I strongly urge that this proposal be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's slip in this way and hope we don't trip. Hello, commissioners and all in attendance. My name is Jim Gaston. I want to briefly express my thanks to those on this board who have consistently put the taxpayers of Macon County first and tried to hold spending accountable. In case we haven't noticed, our commissioners' jobs have become increasingly difficult because of inflationary forces from the federal level they have no control over. The ruling class is manipulating and mismanaging the economy to favor elitists on both sides of the aisle. Whether at a macro or micro level, history is the story of how governments squandered the blood and treasure of the human race. Just ask our Cherokee neighbors if their ancestors trusted the government. I don't need to tell anyone in this room, the elderly, blue collar, single parents and fixed income folks in Macon County are struggling to pay for their basic needs. In this inflation environment, it would be dubious to ask Maconians to pay for even more stuff, even if it is for a noble cause. Last year's sales tax was understood by everyone and the referendum being soundly defeated at the ballot box should tell all of us crystal clear that most people out there who don't take the time to show up at these meetings do not want higher taxes regardless of their intentions. Hopefully, any future tax increase or historic expenditure proposals will be put to a referendum vote if we truly value democracy. In the meantime, those who want to pay more towards a specific proposal can certainly start their own savings account in the same way that the skate park group raised private funds before asking for public money. Changing topics, when federal or state governments send out free money from COVID or whatever, private sector folks do not get paid more at their jobs. While each of us appreciates. While each of us appreciates county workers, just as county workers appreciate those who provide services in the private sector, none of us are deserving of higher status or special favors. We are all suffering together to pay bills in this Joe Biden economy. With society decaying on so many levels, when will we demand smaller government and less regulations that made our communities thrive in the past? I also want to thank this commissioners' board for taking action in the county's relationships with third parties to achieve accountability. Whether it's fire departments, waste management, or regional library systems, it's important to keep the county in control of the county's assets instead of a bureaucracy that answers to no one. And no one is singling out the Fontana system because renegotiated contracts are very common. Let me be clear that I speak for myself and only myself. There are countless other people who feel the same way about these things from my discussions. I'm merely the knucklehead willing to say things out loud that others are thinking, even though I don't take any joy in it. I was taught that being silent and wishing for truth will make cowards out of men. If we don't speak up for limited government, accountability, and preservation of free markets, our grandchildren will one day wake up impoverished on a continent that our ancestors conquered. In closing, regarding the local library that we all love and appreciate, I want to thank this board for your willingness to protect the integrity of the library. Just as any bureaucracy or government department will become self-serving if given the chance, it's perfectly reasonable to rein in agreements with third parties to ensure accountability. As you know, libraries across the entire country, not just Macon County, suddenly went off the rails nearly three years ago because activist members of the American Library Association began targeting minors with DDI and sexual propaganda. As a result, as many of you are aware, a growing number of states have rightly severed ties with the ALA. Several Fontana Library Board members themselves have spoken out on the record at public meetings that their own organization should be more responsible and transparent in their overall management. Even the former chairman of Fontana Board of Trustees spoke publicly at a Swain County meeting, saying the FRL would respect and abide by whatever county commissioners decide because democratically elected commissioners represent the people. I'll offer unity, but needless to say, those earlier speakers on this topic are misinformed because they have believed a false narrative. In closing, the fire department and waste management third parties have contracts that are changed from time to time. The FRL admits that it cannot even pay its staff a livable wage. If the FRL rejects minor changes by three different county commissioner boards, then it proves beyond a shadow of a doubt that Fontana was never willing to compromise for the good of the community, and leaders were following the divisive American Library Association. The ALA openly admits it is pursuing Marxist agendas to radically change American society. Let that sink in, because that comes directly from the ALA, not me. They're not even hiding this. It's not common library patrons who are creating controversy. Common library patrons have always supported the library. It's a tiny few who are carrying water for the divisive NGOs. Again, I'm grateful for this board's careful consideration in these matters. Despite local spend doctors, many Maconians support those of you who are pursuing limited government and accountability by being truly consistent in both fiscal and social matters. Thank you.
Here and here. Edna Johnson.
This is addressed to the Macon County Board of Commissioners. If an egg broke, don't fix it. You've heard it all night. And the Macon County library system, along with the Fontana Regional Library System, work wonderfully for the communities they serve over three counties, Macon, Jackson, and Swain. But the Macon County Board of Commissioners are attempting to usurp the Macon County Public Library Board and the Fontana Regional Library Board because some county commissioners, along with religious extremists in the area, have failed to shut their extremism down in the throats of Macon County through legal means. This is because there are laws in place and regulatory boards to protect citizens' rights to access library materials. So their answer is to try and change the rules. It's all very playbook, but it still has harmful repercussions on all our communities. This especially impacts folks seeking to access books and other media located outside their individual town libraries, but within the regional library sharing systems. Further proposed agreement changes to the FRL 10-year agreement, Roman numeral 3, Section 5, 6, and 7, you will see that the Board of Commissioners are inserting unnecessary government oversight and interference where it is not needed. The county commissioners already appoint the local Macon County Public Library Board, which then in turn selects from those board members whom they would like to send to the FRL board. So truly, the Board of County Commissioners already has the power to appoint the members of the FRL board that represent Macon County. Their proposed changes are redundant and unnecessary. So why do they feel the need to increase their control over this public institution? They will claim it is because of taxpayer funding on the part of the library's budget, but I venture to suggest that it is because they want to be able to appoint, replace, and remove board members at the whim of the commissioner board when those board members don't agree with the extremists on the Board of Commissioners. I find Roman numeral 3, Part B, particularly rich, since for the most part of the summer, the Board of County Commissioners have not even bothered to post their minutes or video recordings of their meetings, even though they already have the infrastructure in place to do so and have historically posted them. These are the same commissioners who cannot be bothered to attend meetings of the other county boards to which the commissioners have been appointed as liaison. I am particularly eager to see them take their own advice during their own meetings regarding their proposed changes in Roman numeral 3, Section B, Number 2, and Section C, Number 4. After the recent budget fiasco, they should try their own advice. The chaotic infighting and lack of research and preparation that we witnessed during the budget arguments does not instill confidence in their ability to correctly run a public library. They can't even stop fighting when it comes to getting a new school infrastructure that is desperately needed in Macon County. And Higdon and some of the rest of the board have made it abundantly clear how they value our county workers. Our library is a great example of a facility that truly serves all the public, not just special interest groups. They already have proper checks and balances in place to assure that everyone has access to their materials and that parents have the final say on what their children may access. All of this is just an extremist temper tantrum that unfortunately has real world consequences. The library is for all of us. Thank you. Oh, by the way, I'm from Alto, so I know sometimes we're pushed to say what part of the county we're from. Alto.
Thank you. Sarah Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Johnson, also from Alto, lifelong Macon County resident and a library cardholder since I was 16. I come before you tonight in regards to our public library. I have never had a bad experience at the library. Never have I felt unwelcome or threatened by any display or book, which seem to be at the root of this new change. We should remember that equal representation in literature helps us understand reality, helps us discover other cultures and their way of thinking, and hopefully empathy. It creates a team environment where ideas are diverse, perspectives varied, and everyone feels valued. The free services and programs offered by Fontana Regional are boon to homeschooling mothers like me. Since they are a part of the Cardinal system, I can get a book sent to me from any library in the system if for some reason we don't have the book. If there's an audiobook I want to hear, then I can access the app through the public library system and listen for free. These are free programs. I don't think you can run a library and manage the county, with all due respect, based on how the last budget fight went. That isn't how I want the library run. We have rising drug and crime rates. This year, I have read press articles about a former Franklin youth pastor arrested at another county school and a sex offender in the park. I've read reports on North Carolina's rape kit backlog, while too much time is spent quibbling over the cost of living adjustments for law enforcement, health department, emergency services, your fire department, people's ability to live in this county decently. You don't need to overburden yourselves with managing a public library in the face of more pressing needs. It is not very limited governed, very limited to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Buddy Callen.
Good evening, Board of County Commissioners.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for what you do for the community. I know all of you up here, you're wonderful, wonderful guys, and your heart is in our community. Now, I must steal from another speaker who was up here just a few minutes ago, and he was saying, "Thank you, thank you for allowing public comment." And I'd like to just say one thing about that. I love the Constitution. Mr. Ridenhour, my four-time great uncle wrote Marbury versus Madison. He trusted John Marshall, and he loves the Constitution. He loved the Constitution as much as I love it. But I do want to say something. My wife and I just got back from a Fontana Regional Library Board meeting, and without any vote from the Fontana Regional Library Board, they decided to end public comment about four or five months ago. That is absolutely sickening. There wasn't even a vote on their nine-member board.
It's broken.
Quite a joke. Anyway, I just had to, I had to get that off my chest. I would love to talk about the library, because as y'all know, my wife and I are very involved in this subject. But I want to talk about the new Franklin High School. I've got lots of questions about this subject, and I've gotten together with a lot of my friends, and they just don't want to get up here and speak before y'all, and I don't have a problem doing that, I'm a salesman. And so here, a couple things. We definitely do need a new high school. There's no doubt about that whatsoever. However, the new school is set to be put on a piece of property that is landlocked, where we can't have tennis courts, a swimming pool, or a baseball field. I don't think that's a good idea. I understand from some that they say there's going to be a major traffic problem there. But the State Highway Department has said that they would be responsible for any traffic problems that would come up. Now, there's a 15-person committee that I've been told, and I believe that not one of those people on that 15-person committee has any knowledge of construction, and not one of those people has any knowledge of development. And I think a lot of people are put on committees because they're bobbleheads, and they just go like this and agree with the rest of them. The new sports facility is put in at the new high school. There's 2,500 seats projected at the football field for the home team and 1,000 seats for the visitors team. Now, are we sure that there's going to be adequate parking there at that new location? These are just questions I'm asking the Board of County Commissioners and just for the audience to understand, too. There is property out by the middle school that we could use for a new school, and we could have sports facilities there that could take care of the middle school and the high school. Now, in the new location, is there adequate parking for the school campus? I'm not talking about football games or anything else. Is there adequate parking? And I've been told by a few of my friends that's very questionable. Now, the current buildings that are there for the school now, that people want to demolish, some are 30 or 40 years old. There's no reason to take a wrecking ball to these buildings. I agree that they're not ADA compliant, which would tie into a new school, but they, I think there's a lot of other uses for the county that those buildings could be, can be used in. And those are just, just some things I wanted to say. Just one more thing about the library. The fact, as I mentioned, that they don't allow public comment, that's pretty telltale. And the other thing I would, I would say is the new person, the new president, Emily Drabinsky, who took over in July as the president of the American Library Association, she wears on her sleeve and tells everyone, "I'm a committed Marxist." Now, I'm not a committed Marxist. I don't think, I know none of y'all are. And they asked her, they said, "Mr. Drabinsky, what do you want to do with American Library Association?" She says, "I want to take it as far left as I can take it. That's my goal with the American Library Association." Thank you all very much for listening.
Yeah.
Sure.
Now, listen, I wish you would have attended some of our community input sessions. I would have loved to engage with you in several issues, but let me take the time to address a couple.
Okay.
I happen to sit on the Regional Transportation Authority Committee, along with the Southwest Commission.
Sure.
Two people who control state funds and how they're funneled into our district pertaining to highway, infrastructure, roads, and all that. Rose and Russ. And I brought up this point, I keep hearing about, "You build the, you build the school, they'll go the highway." You just build it, and they'll go the highway. I brought that up in the Southwest meeting. That's not accurate. That is absolutely not the case. They don't have the money. They have some slight contingency funds left over between now and 2030. $250,000 for Macon, they can borrow, I think she said Haywood's, and then the region has another $250,000.
Sure.
About $750,000 they can get before 2030 in infrastructure. If you paid attention to the state, they put a lot of their projects on hold, they can't acquire right away about now. But another point I want to make.
Sure.
That property I keep hearing about at the middle school, I Googled it. It's the holding track. It's a beautiful piece. We talked about it in close session. It went forward to one back there. It wasn't a track. The track is 2,000 feet long, it's 1,000 feet wide, it's 300 feet in difference in elevation. Just a long narrow rectangle. Can anybody tell me how we're going to put a school? I mean, we're landlocked on about every parcel in this county. How in the world is that going to be any better? You know, so I don't mean to take this out on you personally, but...
Sure.
...being bombarded as well. I just feel like these issues keep coming up, and I want to address them at the right time, and I feel like those right times are at those input sessions. But I just want to take this opportunity to address it tonight. So thank you. And listen, I'm happy to engage with you at any point.
Sure.
Really with anybody. But I feel like some of these issues keep coming up, and look, you acquire the track, all the site work, it's the, you're 300 feet in elevation difference. I mean, you're on the side of the mountain. I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around that. So, you know, I do think there are probably better tracks in this county for a high school. I've made that comment publicly multiple times.
Sure.
It's kind of like finding a unicorn. I mean, I just wanted to engage with you and thank you. It's, this DOT stuff is hard. And by the way, Rose did tell this board, or asked me to tell this board and the school board, they want to be interlocked hand in hand on a renovation, on a replacement, or on a new track, and they need to be involved from day one.
Sure.
So I guess that's my job as being committee member, to kind of keep in touch as that time comes.
No, no, I understand. And you know, they say, and I'm a Marine, they say, "Join the Navy and see the world." I'm gonna tell you, join the library fight and see North Carolina, because my wife and I have never been to Nantahala before, or Bryson City or any of these places, and we go to library meetings every week. But no, I appreciate being able to talk to y'all. My love and my passion is with the library. That's the main thing I care about. Thank you all very much.
Addition to agenda.
Chairman, I've got one to go by. Under Item 10E, old business, can we bring an update to current Macon County school projects? Macon middle school, middle school track, and any super issues, please, sir?
Under 10, make a 10E.
Yes, sir, create a 10E.
And that will be presented by?
I'll kind of start the engagement, and some of the school board, and they're asking very well.
Okay. Any problems, okay, guys?
I've got a couple. Under D, it would be under reports and presentations, we're already going through A and B. Reports and presentations, D, the skating mat request. Any representation of skating mat here? I still won't, I still won't have a word on that. Under new business... Under new business, 11B1. We have basically, if you made a call every year, council from town of Franklin, when we talked about social districts that won't announce, I won't throw in. I don't, I don't need to add it to the agenda, it'll be in our general conversation. Then, under a form, it's number 13, Macon County Public Library Board Trustees. We'll table that until next month. And, number 13.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if we could remove item 11G.
Remove item 11G. All right. Anybody else? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, continue with the agenda. All right, yes.
Well, I've got adjustments to, have additions to the agenda. Yeah, give us an adjustment, approval of the agenda. Approval.
Much appreciated, agenda.
Any discussion? All papers, signature, vibration, right hand. Thank you.
Under reports and presentations, C, interfacility transport and staff concerns. Emergency Management Director, Warren Kaye. Welcome, Warren. Anyone?
30 minutes, and I'll be done. Yeah, we can. So, Mr. Chairman, tonight, I wanted to bring something to your attention, and there's some, some issues that are affecting EMS, not just in our county, but in the region. And I kind of want to bring that up, to explain to you what's going on, and what I know about it, and how it's affecting us. And if you've actually watched any of the local media outlets, you've probably heard some stuff over the last couple of weeks. McDowell County actually put a moratorium on interfacility non-emergency transports from McDowell County to Mission Hospital. They stopped building, they're going to take a 45-day or so pause and not do those. As early as yesterday, there was some, a story that was on local media about Buncombe County. Buncombe County had sent some correspondence to Mission Hospital and said, "We've got some issues, and if we don't correct those issues, we're going to have to make some changes by the first week of December." And I'll tell you what those issues are. They've had some issues with what we call a receiving time. Receiving time is the time from when one of my trucks gets to a facility or hospital until a patient carrier is actually transferred to another provider. They're off our bed, they're in another bed, they're accepted by somebody, and then carrier's actually moved on. And what's happened is these, these counties are having some issues with that timeframe. They, they've talked about some rather lengthy timeframes. We're not immune to that, and I want to tell you, before you hear that from somewhere else, we, we have had some issues with that, but our issues have not been nearly as severe as what you've heard on some of those other, those other counties. I went back to October and September to look at some timeframes. And in October, our average receiving time is 4.84 minutes, from the time we get to the facility until that carrier's transferred to, to somebody else. Now, obviously, we're a little different, because Buncombe County, for instance, they're taking all their patients to Mission. We're only taking critical patients to Mission. So, so it's a little different for us. But there was one outlier in the month of October. We had one call that was 125-minute wait-in time to Mission Hospital. That's two hours. What that's done for us is that three-hour round trip for that truck to get from here, or longer, if you're Highlands, to get from here to Mission and back is now a five-hour trip. So, I looked at September. September actually was, was a little odd. There were, there were actually 10 calls that we had that kind of went out of our normal threshold. Nine of those were somewhere in the 30-minute timeframe, which sounds like a lot. But 10, 15 minutes, maybe even 20, if I'm going to a larger facility, by the time I pull up, I get my patient out, I figure out where I'm going, I go down the hallway, I change floors, I find the right location, I transfer them. 10, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, even if I'm moving a lot of complicated stuff over, probably not a big deal. When we get to 30, that concerns me a little. And then we had another outlier in September that was 70 minutes. So, that's an hour and 10 minutes. So, I, I wanted to bring that to your attention, because I'm sure somebody's going to ask, "Are we having that same issue here?" And, and we are occasionally, but it's not to the same level that some of these other services are at. Now, we're, we're having some other issues, and I want to talk to you about those. Talk about that truck being out of service. That, that, if you've got a two-hour wait-in time over there, that truck's out of service for five hours here. I talked to you before about what our minimum staffing level is. On any given day, you have five annulances in Franklin, you have a supervisor in SUV, you have three in Franklin, one in Highlands, one in Nantahala. The very, very bare minimum that we have to have for our 911 customers is four. Two in Franklin, one in Highlands, one in Nantahala. So, one trip to Mission, one trip to Gainesville, one trip to Atlanta, we're down to our minimums. The longer that truck is out of, out of town, out of pocket, that puts us at risk of not being able to meet our shoot time. The times that whenever you need me, immediately you come to you as a 911 customer. 90% of the time is the, is the industry standard, that if you dial 911, I immediately need to have a truck ready to pull out the door for you. We have to be very careful that we don't interfere with that. And, and we have actually, we have declined some transfers, the out-of-town transfers to some of our facilities for our non-emergency transports. And we've done that for a couple reasons. If they're a lower priority call, and most of our stuff's color-coded, when it goes into the Mission system, it's assigned a cover, and the covers tell us the timeframe that we have to meet to get that patient somewhere else. Mission will get those, they'll pass it out to either us or Regional Transport, and it gets assigned to somebody to make that trip somewhere. Occasionally, we have been declining some of those, because we've been short on resources, or we know that the timeframe somewhere's going to put us short here with our 911 calls. And, and you have to remember, it's a little different for us, it's a little different for McDowell, it's a little different for Buncombe. Our primary business, our primary responsibility is 911. That, that, that is our primary customer base. We are the only option for those folks to call, for us to come. And I look back at some numbers. You can't really look at 2020 and 2021. Data for those years for healthcare is useless. So, the next closest normal year I can look at is 2019. From 2019 to 2022, we've had about an 11% increase in call volume. I'm six staff members short, which is about 12% of my staff, full-time staff at the moment. So, we're doing about 11% more business with about 88% of our staff. Now, we're, we're trying to work that, we're trying to fix that, there's some things we're doing. We hired five part-time folks about three weeks ago. Four of those are actually still in orientation. The other one, something came up, and that one wasn't going to work out. Probably out of those, maybe one will be interested in a full-time career. So, and it's not just us, it's EMS systems across the area, and that's part of the reason we're here. Regional Transport, which is the, the big transfer system out of Mission, they basically don't have a truck in Franklin anymore because they have staff issues. And their only business is to do interfacility transfers. They don't have the, the 911 call volume we have. And with all that being said, we're, we're still not bad. We're, we're struggling. I actually looked at our response times for, for October. Our average shoot time, or our average response time, from the time you dial 911 to the time I walk out the door with a truck, is 2.28 minutes. That's not bad, that's, that's okay. The thing that concerns me that I'm starting to see is, in October, we had two, two times where our shoot time was 10 minutes. We had one shoot time where it was 26 minutes. 26 minutes is way too much. 10 minutes, that doesn't sound like a lot. But, but when you call me, and you need one of the orange and black trucks somewhere, and you live in Marlberry, or you live in Tillico, or you live on Ledford Ranch, and I've still got a 20 to 25-minute drive time to you, because Macon County is a big county to cover from border to border, and you add 10 minutes on top of that, we're, we're starting to see strains in that system on the healthcare end that I'm not sure where we're going to get. We're still making it, those positions, we're covering them with overtime folks, we're covering with part-time folks. I looked at our last payroll. We have about 27 folks on our part-time list. The, the problem is, some of those folks are retired, and they can only work so much. Some of those folks have other jobs, and they work for us, kind of a sidelined job, or a second income, or it's just something they want to do. 15 out of those 27 folks worked the last two weeks, and we still have to use full-time staff to pull in the cover shifts. I'm going to give you two examples, and this has been one of those weeks. Until 10 o'clock tonight, from about 5:30 tonight till 10 o'clock, we're down to two trucks in Franklin with other staffing. That gives us four work to manage the system. Where that hurts us, I'm going to give Highlands, I'm going to use Highlands as an example. Anytime that truck leaves the city limits of Highlands, if they go to Blue Valley, if they go down Horse Cove, if they go to Scam Mountain, we float a truck from Franklin to Highlands to cover downtown Highlands, because we know that if something happens up there, we, we can't get there from here quickly enough. Nantahala. Anytime that truck transports out of Nantahala, we float a truck from Franklin to cover Nantahala, because it's a long drive from here to Nantahala, so those folks have to have that service. So, what happens is, when we get down to four trucks, it really hampers us on the ability to, to keep those numbers up. 89% of our volume are 911 customers. And I call them customers, they're not callers, they're, they're not issues. That's the people that we're here to serve. I'm not telling you that the system's broken. We, we've had some issues, we're, we're seeing some of the same issues that these other counties are having. Some of it's for a little different reason, but they're here. And I've been knowing this a long time. And I don't know, I'm not sure where we're going to come out of this one. You've known me for a long time, Paul, we've pulled some rabbits out of the hats for years. I, I'm afraid, at some point in the near future, we're going to reach into the hat, and I'm not going to be able to pull the rabbit. I don't know how to fix, I, I usually don't come to you unless I have a solution. I usually don't ask the question unless I have the answer. I'm not sure on this one. So, I just want to make you aware, and I'm not, I'm not telling you for folks to worry about 911 not being there when they need it. We're, we're there. But we're starting to see the strains that these other places are seeing. And it concerns me. So, with that being said, are there any questions?
When I've got, you're full-time paramedics. They're working overtime, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
How are they holding up? I mean, this, as someone that has retired from emergency services and stuff, you know, after so long, your paramedics will start breaking.
We, we have some folks that they can do their regular scheduled shifts, and that's all they can do. And we have some that are very dedicated that will work a lot. And HR frowns on me occasionally. We turn in some very creative time sheets on how folks have worked and how this has all worked out. We try to separate them, for instance, we'll send, if I've got some of us working at 24 in Franklin, and then they're going to have to turn around and go somewhere else and pull another 24, we'll try and swap them with Nantahala, because typically, the volume is less there, so there's, there's a better chance that they won't be covered up over there. The problem is, I'm, I'm rolling the dice. I'm playing the numbers game. Because there's as much of a chance that you could go to Nantahala, and even though Nantahala had 154 calls last year, which is one every two, seven days, what's to say that that's not the day that they have that one over there, and they're on the road for three to five hours going to Atlanta somewhere? So, to answer your question, we're, we're making it. It's, it's expensive. Financially, we have been okay. We, we pulled it out last year, we, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, we still came in just under budget last year, even though overtime's expensive, because you're not paying benefits twice for the same people. And we've got those full-time slots that, that we're not having to pay. So, we had to move some money around, but we still came out. But I, I'm concerned, at some point, we will run out of those employees that are willing to do that.
Because it's a strain mentally and physically in this profession, so it's, but thank you.
And we actually, there's a new advertising campaign, we've been working with NC Works. You'll see a new ad campaign come out if you hadn't already this week, to try and recruit folks. We, we have put together a recruitment team, to try and go into the school systems. We've been working with HR with different strategies on how to, to get people in the door, to catch them at the school systems. The problem is, if I were to look at the region right now, if you look at the, the counties from McDowell West, I don't know that there's enough people coming out of all the educational systems at the moment to cover all the vacancies in all those counties. And I, I want to tell you honestly, the other thing we've thought about, we, we, we have pretty high standards. We, we, we put our folks through the process before we hire them. We also hold them responsible for quality throughout the process. I have seriously had to have that thought of, do we need to adjust our standards just to get somebody behind the wheel? And I don't think that's the thing to do. I, I think we deserve more than that. So, that's, we have not done that, and I, and it will be a very bad day when I come to you and tell you that we lowered our standards to get, get more people in there.
You know, you know, Warren, I'm sitting here thinking about the point John made about the strain placed on our emergency medical, and I just want to say God bless them. After last month, really the past few months, between the accidents on the highway, the fires, the home fires, I mean, they do it every day. I mean, I, I bet you no way I could, I could do what they have to do and see what they see. I mean, volunteer firefighters, firefighters, the law enforcement, you know, the, the even dispatch, you know, just every aspect of emergency medical.
And they're not immune. 911 Centers about 10% short on their staff at the moment. It's obviously less people, but they have less total employees, so it doesn't take many people, they're down on their numbers, aren't they? And right now, we, we expect another vacancy there right around the first of the year. Typically, what we do is, we hire people part-time to start with. We get them through orientation, we make sure they're going to work, and just to be bluntly honest with you, if it's not going to work out, it's easier to take them off the roster if they're part-time, if they're hired full-time or off the bat. At the moment, in the dispatch office, we're, I don't know that we have a part-time person ready to step in if we were to have a vacancy tomorrow. So, it's, it's not just us, it's across the board with the law enforcement.
Warren, I know our CTE ladies here somewhere. How about we start a CTE program for the sheriff and paramedics and let them go for it?
I, I think you will hear a presentation on that, because I, I've already stuck my nose in there and been nosing around to see who's going to be competent coming out of that presentation. And we've actually talked to, I'll bust candy bubble a little. We're also open to making contingent offers to folks to say, okay, if you will, if you will go into this profession, and you graduate, and you get your certification, we will get you a job, we have a space for you. And years ago, when I first started, that didn't happen. You, you waited, you, you waited until somebody retired or something before you got a job. And, and anymore, that's, that's just not the case.
You know, Warren, I want to take a moment and say, I mean, I don't know the solution to this, but I do want to say, as a chaplain for first responders here, we have got to do a better job at taking care of these people. You know, as a chaplain, you get to go out on calls, you know, obviously with these guys. So, a few weeks ago, we're out at this fire, to four fire departments, man, to put out this fire in a small house. You know, as chaplains, when we're out on the scene, and I'm out there with these guys at 3:00 in the morning, and you're looking at all these faces of these people who do this over and over and over again. You know, when I was running for this position, I made a comment one time. I said, you know, in this country, we've got our priorities really jacked up. You know, we'll take entertainers who do absolutely nothing, pay them millions of dollars. I mean, you take people who put their lives on the line, day in, day out, you pay them peanuts. You know, we got to do a better job of taking care of them. You know, it's an exhausting job, it's a thankless job, and when we got to sit there and do these debriefs with every one of them that are going through serious trauma from what they're seeing on these calls, there's, you know, it's, it's heartbreaking. You know, I'm hearing what you're saying right now, you know, just the EMS, that's just EMS. It's not touching the fire department, our deputies, PD. Like, there's a lot that goes into what these folks do. into what these folks do. You know, and I'm always going to be a strong advocate for them because getting the opportunity to be there with them, it's amazing what these people do all the time. So yeah, I don't know what the, what the answer is yet, you know, but just know you guys have my full support, you know, whatever needs to get done, I have to take better care of these people because without them, we're in serious trouble.
I also want to say one other thing and I'm almost to my thirty minutes clock, so I'll quit. We actually have very meaningful communication with Mission Hospital and the two local hospitals. We're very lucky. Most counties don't have one hospital, we have two. We probably have some of the best communication that we've ever had with the two local hospitals, between Tom Neil and Clint Kendall, that entire process. And we've actually addressed some of this through them with Mission and Mission has actually been receptive. So HCA sometimes gets a bad rap on some things, but fortunately, Warren, unfortunately, I'm involved directly with a lot of stuff, particularly that comes through Angel, but not so much Highlands, but to some degree there. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that they go through to try and fix some of these problems. Are they all fixed? No, they're not. But I've actually been very pleased with the communication we've had with those folks. So I'm not bringing this up to say that I think we're not being heard anywhere. I think they're struggling as much as we are to try and figure out the solution. And if I could tell you I could solve the healthcare solution tonight, I'd probably quit and walk out the door a bit later or something. But we're not going to do it.
Primarily a static issue, right?
That tends to be the biggest part of it.
All the way through the system.
All the way through the system.
Offers to the paramedics and I'm glad you're there.
Law enforcement as well. Law enforcement as well.
Oh, oh. Say, but keep us apprised, any red flags coming up. I know there have been communications, but Mission Hospital is understanding some of the issues that we're facing here from the medical community. Just keep surprised and thank you for what you do, all of your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Request from a Skater Mountain. We'll skip that. Skater Mountain, there was possibly someone here that was going to present the historical society. All right, we pick that up, get it here next month. Old business. Discussion and consideration of retention pay policy. Camp Manager Derek Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, as did the previous speakers, I don't, with this system, the broadcasting equipment is the property of the North Carolina court system. And so we can't tap on to that for our presentations. Nonetheless, I made a hard copy of each one of the board members. Well, as the, well as our, the senior chair is hurting. And I apologize to the audience, there'll be a copy available of this presentation on the website and we'll make sure that's available tomorrow. Let's see. I left up a copy of that presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. And I'd just like to say, begin this by saying, you know, you heard Warren get up here tonight and talk about some of the difficulties that he's experiencing within his agency. And I feel like it's my position as county manager to give these department heads the tools they need to do their job and to stay out of the way. Because there's no better in the business when it comes to emergency services than Warren Cave. And my job is to make sure that Warren Cave has everything he needs to do his job successfully. All the tools. In a public sector organization, there's no greater tool than a public servant. And as county manager, if I'm not always advocating to give department heads like Warren Cave, to give the sheriff, to give department heads like Ms. Braswell sitting back here, if I'm not advocating for an environment in which they can successfully recruit and retain highly qualified public servants, or the greatest tool that they can possibly have, then I'm failing to do my job as a county manager. So with that being said, I would like to present to you here tonight, this is not news. This is something that we informed this board in May of 2023 following notification that the American Rescue Plan Act funding can no longer be used for premium pay, that we would be pursuing a way to use the remaining funds to fulfill the intended purpose. And since then, I'm happy to say that administration, working alongside our finance office, our human resources office, the pay plan committee, the North Carolina School of Government, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, pleased to say that we've found a solution and I'm happy to be here presenting that to you here tonight. As many of you will recall, in October of twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved using the ARPA funding received by Macon County, the six-point-nine million in ARPA funding in its entirety to go towards premium pay. If you'll flip your page. The primary purpose, of course, at this time, was to provide additional compensation to these Macon County government employees who allowed this unit of government to continue providing high-quality uninterrupted public services all throughout the pandemic while simultaneously leading a countywide COVID-19 mitigation effort. Quote comes to mind, I mean, it was Winston Churchill, there's nothing more exhilarating than to be shot at, it was no result. I can't help but think, you know, when we talk about our public safety employees, when we talk about our sheriff's office, when we talk about our EMS, our health officials, especially during this time, you know, when we say we've had a bad day at work, what is a bad day for us, really? It's something totally different than if a paramedic has a bad day at work, the things that they've seen at work, or a sheriff's day, the things they have seen at work. So during this, the height of the pandemic, those on the front lines, they were going in this every day. Nobody, we didn't know anything about COVID at this time. We didn't know what it would do. All we knew that it was, you know, we saw the ticker there every day on TV, just like they did when they got home, but they didn't have a choice to work from home. They couldn't, they couldn't call in sick, they had to be there, they had to go. And they did. Many counties around Macon County, many counties across the state closed their doors, totally went to work from home, virtual. Proud to say that, again, we provided uninterrupted public service throughout the duration of the pandemic. The first-class mitigation effort, we worked with private business to set up a call center. Tammy, we, again, kudos to Mr. Field, Greg, he, I know he wouldn't want recognition, but we couldn't have made it without him donating his call center to us. We then had to staff and operate that call center using volunteers and county employees. Tammy headed that up. And we're not talking about a small call center, we're talking about a call center that was receiving tens of thousands of calls a day, staffed by twenty, twenty folks a day, volunteers and county employees alike cycling those through there. We're talking about a maintenance crew that made it possible to have a drive-through vaccination and testing facility at our public health department that was ran by our EMS and public health over there. This, this was able to administer tens of thousands of vaccinations and tests to Macon County residents. So, you know, in addition, we recognized at this time, premium pay also allowed us to remain competitive in what had became a booming economy very quickly with the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, this resulted in population growth that we saw in our real estate numbers and our sales taxes numbers, creating additional revenue. And it resulted in a tremendously competitive private sector and tremendously competitive public sector alike. But want to highlight the demand, and Warren mentioned it, the eleven percent increase in EMS costs for service. During this same time period, fifty-two percent increase for service and animal control costs, twenty-four percent increase in building permits issued during this time period. Not to mention, most recently, with Medicaid expansion, saw about thirty-six hundred more cases coming onto the caseload of those DSS workers with Medicaid passage in the most recent budget. So today, while much of the public health-related uncertainties associated with the pandemic have subsided, this strong local economy and the substantial increases in demand, which also accompanied it, continue to remain present and they continue to present us with workforce challenges. Here, I've also included in the right, a little timeline of events there. That's your welcome to read, ending with what we're re-proposing here tonight. But let's turn the page. And this, this slide was taken directly from the October twenty-first presentation that was given at the time the pay plan was presented along with the premium pay policy. I stated at that time that the pay plan got us to the five-yard line with respect to our ability to recruit and retain high-quality employees. But I felt like the premium pay put us in the end zone, got us over the finish line, gave us that competitive edge that we needed. Why I was asked then, how long are these economic conditions going to last? What happens when the money runs out? And I still contend today, as I did at that time, that by December of twenty-four, which is highlighted here in this presentation that was given in October of twenty-one, I still contend that December of twenty-four provides us with ample time and we will be in a much better position to answer these questions at that time. So we'll see, by December of twenty-four, the prolonged effect of increased interest rates on things like inflation, how it impacts the housing market, travel and tourism, the economy in general. Now, if the economy continues to remain stable, continues to grow, continues to flourish as it has, then additional revenue will be available. We'll continue to be able, advancing employees through our pay plan, just like the surrounding counties are, just like what we've had to do to remain competitive, just like we were able to do in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We'll be able, we'll be able to do that. If the economy goes the other way, well, then competition's going to level off. Public sector naturally becomes more attractive in a declining economy. The ARPA funding will be gone, but we will still have used it as we intended to weather the storm with respect to this competitive atmosphere that we're in now. And lastly, but certainly not least, it will be no impact on our operating budget. Our operating budget will not have suffered at all. Regardless of the future, we can't lose sight of what is important today. And as for today, across the board, demand for services in Macon County continues to grow. Heard Mr. Cave stand up here. At the same time, the money in the local economy continues to flow. Competition between this organization and public and private sector employers alike is stronger today than it ever has been. If you could flip the page. And we've done an excellent job, but I don't want to take away from the excellent job that we've done in maintaining our pay plan. Four and a half percent, we gave a step increase in a cost of living adjustment in the last budget. But as you can see here, you know, whether you're talking about, when you're talking about public sector agencies, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships. You see the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four state budget increases. Seven percent state employees, seven percent non-certified school staff, bus drivers, nine percent, highway patrol officers, eleven-point-one percent retirees, those on fixed incomes, four percent. So, you know, that is a competitor as well, with the exception of the retirees, that we're having to compete with on a public level with respect to the state budget. If you look at your chart on the right here, what I've done is I've taken the latest information available from the school of government and taken nine positions that represent a cross-section of our county services that we provide. I have, using that school of government data, compiled the average salary for Cherokee County, Jackson County, Graham County and Transylvania Counties. Those were the counties in and around our region that were readily available and that data was available for, in this school of government dataset. And as you will see, you know, we've done an excellent job implementing the pay plan and moving and keeping up with moving people through the pay plan, but so have all these other counties. If you look at this chart on the right, we're neck and neck with them. Matter of fact, among these nine positions here, Macon County is point-seven percent below the regional average. We're right in line. That's, you know, if you took, put three more positions in there, we might be neck and neck. But bottom line is, we're right in line. Same with the state budget here. So that rising tide lifts all ships and in doing that, I believe today, just as I did in October of twenty-one, that our pay plan still puts us on the five-yard line. And I'm standing before you here today to once again ask to take it in the end zone with the premium pay. I believe it is more important today, and it is, it will not, with this retention pay and our ability to, to use this funding to recruit and entertain employees is more important today than it was when it was originally enacted, enacted in October of twenty-one. Why do I believe that? It's simply because that public and private sector organizations across the country have spent billions of dollars doing the same thing. If you'll flip your page. Why was that your, Warren? You're okay about that. So in this chart, if you look here at the, this is nation-wide, and this gives the ARPA funding that was used in the last quarter of twenty-twenty-three through July by counties and municipalities, states, over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in population that received over ten million dollars in American Rescue funds. It also includes an annual expenditure within each of these categories for counties, states, tribal entities, less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in population that receive less than ten million dollars in COVID-19 funding. So it's a broad cross-section of what's going on across the country. Here, and these are in billions, by the way. So let's just briefly look at these and see what's going on. Seventeen-point-seven billion in housing. Where do you see that at? You see that large projects primarily centered in urban areas. I know Macon County here, we have recently, the Housing Department received grant funding to conduct a housing needs assessment to identify, you know, where our housing shortfalls are in Macon County. That, that will be completed in six to eight months from now. So again, you know, you look at that timeline, these funds have to be expended by December of twenty-four. When you look at infrastructure at thirty-one-point-two billion there, again, we're talking about a lot of big cities, a lot of big states and a lot of big water and sewer projects. Macon County does not have water and sewer projects because we don't have water and sewer system. The state of Arizona, for instance, created a two-hundred-million-dollar water conservation grant fund. State of South Carolina invested one-point-five billion across the state, two-hundred water and sewer infrastructure projects. That, things like that are included in that thirty-one-point-two billion. What's also included in that thirty-one-point-two billion is two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars that went to the state of North Carolina that later became the great grant funds. As we discussed in October of twenty-one, Macon County statutory authority to enact anything with respect to broadband. We have a very limited sandbox that we can play in there. But we were able to take two-hundred-thousand dollars of our ARPA funding and we were able to leverage six million dollars in this great grant funding, right here under this infrastructure, that thirty-one-point-two billion. We were able to leverage six million dollars of that money to provide broadband. We've heard the lady from Frontier here tonight expand broadband in Macon County to nearly three thousand, over three thousand residents, fiber internet. So we've taken advantage of this category. Twelve-point-eight billion has been used to support workers across the country. And yes, this includes premium pay. And you don't have to go that far to find somewhere that is doing it. Here's an article from December eighth, a quote from the December eighth edition in twenty-twenty-one of the Smoky Mountain News. "We're doing what Macon and a lot of other counties are doing by offering premium pay", King said, and that's Kevin King, the manager's of Swain County. "It's hard with the amount of money we got. We couldn't get into the assistance programs for water and sewer, of course, Fair County. Improving pay for employees sends a safer route, especially since the county has struggled to recruit, entertain employees the last few years. Just like Macon County, Swain County continued to lose public health and public safety employees to surrounding counties that could offer more competitive pay." So that was, that article highlighted what Swain County was doing, but we're not just talking about Swain County, we're talking about Clay County, Graham County, Cherokee County, Town Franklin, all these, all these places that surround us and municipalities that lie within our jurisdiction have used a portion or all of their ARPA funding towards things like premium pay and employee compensation. So again, So again, as I go back to the first statement I made, as county manager, I think it's my job to give our team the best shot we got to recruit and retain highly qualified employees. And again, that's why I'm saying that we need to stick with the course, as was originally intended for these funds, because you don't have to go far. Matter of fact, be in your car about five minutes to fifteen minutes and get to somewhere that's doing it. Public health response, twelve point one billion. Again, as much of the public health-related instances with this pandemic decline, and we continue to improve, I expect that that category of funding will decrease as well. Small business growth, $5 billion. If you recall, Macon County started a small business loan fund. We put $250,000 in fund during the pandemic there, at the height of the pandemic, opened it to all small businesses. I think we had less than $30,000 that was applied for out of that small business home. So again, we've touched the infrastructure fund with our ARPA funding, we've touched this small business economic growth fund. Lastly, the revenue replacement. Counties like Jackson County have used their ARPA funding for revenue replacement, and many counties have, as you'll notice, it dwarfs for this reporting period here, all these other expenditures at 108 billion, and that's simply because it just offers so much flexibility. In other words, you can, the American Rescue Plan permits you to use this funding to cover certain expenditures, which then frees up county money to be used for other things, which is exactly what that we're proposing to do with here tonight. And I can't tell you, you know, there's a, there's a, it is kind of misleading because this supporting workers category at twelve point eight billion, I don't know how much of that 108 billion has gone towards supporting workers, same as Macon County is proposing to do here tonight, but I know that it is happening because, like I said, we were able to discuss and be walked through the process of this with the North Carolina School of Government and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as I'm sure that they have walked many other counties and municipalities under their, through the same thing, just as other counties or other states have done for counties across the country. So I do know that's going on. So if we step out and then look at all the ways that we can use this funding, you know, you see that billions of dollars have went in to supporting the employees and supporting workers, and that has trickled down to Macon County, and I again believe puts us in the position that we must do the same thing. Now, when you look at this chart here on the right, you see all of your public school units across the state of North Carolina. Expenditures through September 30th, four point seven billion in total expenditures, nearly three billion of that has been spent on salaries and benefits. And here in Macon County alone, the school system has received approximately sixteen point three million in SIR funding, nine point seven million of that has went towards salaries, benefits, bonus pay, supplemental pay, et cetera. And that is not counting a payment that is scheduled for December of '23. So, but Macon County is not alone, Macon County's school system is not alone. Again, doing the same thing, we're having to rise with the tide. So as we look at the chart below that, nonprofits, same story, seventeen point five million grand total, funds received here through 9/30/23, ten point four of that has went to salaries and benefits. And lastly, locally with the private sector, loans for the paycheck protection in Macon County today have totaled approximately thirty-three million. And those are loans ranging from a thousand dollars to a million dollars. Again, I feel like that this is more important today because today, we're not the only ones doing this. So as we move along, and we're getting near the end, you can flip your page there. This is the last slide. Our ability to have a qualified dispatcher on the other end of the line, when you call 911, that matters today. Our ability to be able to roll five ambulances if we have the need here in Macon County at one time, that matters today. If that contractor on that job site building that house and needs that building inspection to be able to move forward, that matters today. If sewage is ankle-deep in the jail and has to be dealt with by our maintenance guys and gals, that matters today. When you want to throw your trash away, you won't be sure Mr. Burks has got that gate open. That matters today. The plan I'm proposing here tonight is to stick with the original plan. It's the only plan we've ever discussed. It allows us to remain competitive with respect to recruitment and retention of employees by using the remainder of our ARPA funds to offset expenditures within the operating budget under the revenue replacement category as permitted by the ARPA funding guidelines. This previously appropriated county revenue will then be freed up and will fund the recruitment and retention policy through October of '24, that is the same time the original premium pay policy would have ended. So sure, this is a win. It's a win for the transit driver that's now, for this time period, going to be paid seventeen dollars and twenty cents an hour instead of fifteen dollars and twenty cents an hour. It's a win for that maintenance worker that's going to be paid sixteen fifty rather than fourteen fifty for the hour work here in this time period. But you ask yourself, you know, with the problems we're facing, the circumstances we're facing, the timelines we're facing, just like I said in October of 2021, I'll say in November of 2023, it's the best way to use these funds. It's a win because it's not only a win for the employee, it's a win for the organization. You can never go wrong when you invest in your most valuable asset, and that's what these, that's what these men and women are. They're our most valuable asset. They took us through some of the hardest times we've ever faced, and they're still, you know, we're still out there. They're still out there grinding, and we're still out there doing our job, and we're still having to compete. We're still having to compete day in and day out. It's just the times we're in. And again, nobody has a crystal ball. We can't predict the future, but again, talking about what we need to do today. So it's a win for the organization. We can continue delivering high-quality public services at the lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina. So it's a win for the taxpayer as well. And last, but certainly not least, $350 billion in American Rescue funded was put into the economy with the American Rescue funds. The intent of that money was to get put back into the economy. And by putting this in the hands of Macon County employees, they're directly injecting it into the local economy here in Macon County. So it's a win for the employee, it's a win for the organization, it's a win for the taxpayer, and it's a win for the local business owner. And with that, as you will see here, my manager's recommendation, the three things I'll be asking for approval here tonight would be approval of the recruitment and retention pay policy, which is it mirrors the premium pay policy with the exception of where the funding will come from. We'll approve the grant project, we'll request approval for the grant project ordinance for Macon County American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, drawn with our state and local fiscal recovery funds, that's what we have to submit to Department of Treasury. And lastly, we'll approve the budget amendment, we will request approval of the budget amendment that transfers 1.8 million in American Rescue funds to the General Fund, Housing Fund, and Solid Waste Fund to cover salaries and fringes under the revenue replacement category for fiscal year '24. Thank you. We have to take it back there.
Gentlemen, you've heard the presentation. It was a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the manager's recommendation, stick with the plan of the approved, approved, approved situations there. That's the recruitment and retention policy presented tonight, November 14th, 2023.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. Motion to second. Discussion.
Chairman, let me, let me jump in on discussion here. Mr. Wrong, you know, when I saw this agenda, it kind of made me think about reaching in a five-gallon bucket full of rattlesnakes for a night caller. I mean, that's what this looks like, and I had more anxiety about this item than any other. And the reason is because I have my own employees that I have to go live in the face tomorrow morning that worked through COVID, that worked through all this. But what, your presentation just hit me with deja vu. We stepped through this two years ago. Three members on this board already approved it. Am I, am I wrong in saying that?
That is correct.
Why are we back?
We are back due to a change in the Department of Treasury's guidelines, the final rule that forced us to have to discontinue premium pay as it was intended, as we had originally went through with it, and we had to then go back and pursue doing it through the revenue replacement category.
To me, I mean, I'm in favor of this. It's old business. Like I said, I already supported it two years ago. I mean, nothing changes. They're not going to pledge money to employees and then take it back now and try to reappropriate. So I don't, I don't work like that. But I just wanted to make sure that this is not a new.
No.
That, that's where I was going.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Let's stick here. Wait around long again. Mr. Manager, and when these funds were approved by the federal government, they were sent to Macon County, the Board of Commissioners approved giving almost $7 million to county employees for a $2 an hour premium pay. And in April the 5th, 2023, the federal government says these funds can no longer be used for premium pay. And so I've done a lot of research on this as well. Premium pay initially, the federal government authorized local governments to pay out premium pay to eligible workers who performed essential work during the COVID-19 pandemic. Premium pay was intended to compensate essential employees for heightened risk due to COVID-19. As April 23, the federal government has said, the local government may no longer expend ARPA funds on premium pay because the pandemic is over. No premium payments can be made to employees after that date. If the local government continues to make premium payments, they are in violation of federal law. This is a risk that the U.S. Treasury could claw back any funds expended on premium pay after April 23 cutoff. If this happens, the local government would be required to reimburse Treasury for all premium payments made after April 23 deadline. Only eligible workers who performed essential work during the pandemic were eligible for premium pay when the ARPA award was first made. An eligible worker is a low-to-moderate-income employee, generally those who earn less than 75,000. Essential worker is work that involves regular in-person interaction with the public. Therefore, only those low-to-moderate-income employees who continue to work in the office or interface with the public during the pandemic were performing essential work. And what you're asking this board to do, in my mind, is manipulate the funds from the General Fund to take that much money out of the General Fund and replace it with the ARPA funds so that we can pay this $2 an hour. Now, let's, let's just go, let's just go on the end of this a little bit deeper, because I ask specific questions. If the funds cannot be used for employee premium pay, what can the funds be used for now? These funds can be used for any capital improvement project, it can be used for anything that the county government needs to spend money on, except premium pay. It cannot be added to an employee's salary. It can't be added.
John, this, the, the final rule that you're taking excerpts out of, it's a lot like reading the New Testament. You can't just read one verse here and one verse. You got to take it in its entirety. So what you're saying about the premium pay, the interactions with the public, there's another part to that. There also is the physical handling of items that were handled by, or are handled by, that were handled by, or are handled by patients, public, or coworkers. So not only were those frontline employees that were out there, but they were sending up the paperwork in interdepartmental mail, everybody was touching that, everybody on every office interacts with the public or other coworkers, or handles materials distributed from the public or other coworkers. So every employee qualified as an essential employee. That policy was approved, that policy's legal. What we're doing now with these funds, proposing it to do with revenue replacement, we're not the only county that's done it, we're not the only county that's doing it. It's being vetted through the School of Government, it's being vetted through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and it's perfectly legal, what we're doing with these funds.
Well, sir, this information came from an attorney at the School of Government. Today.
Okay, my information's right. It's about like, you know.
Well, I'm just telling you what the school of government's doing with these questions.
Right.
Now, the, the whole thing is, the federal government gave this money, the federal government suspended this money. Now, we were talking just a few minutes ago about the state don't have the money to build roads. They give 58% of the state budget to the school system in the state of North Carolina. You know what? If that keeps happening, everything's going to fall apart. We cannot spend every penny that we get trying to make employees happy.
That's not what we're doing.
I'm sorry, that is, you're, you're talking about, we need to be, we need to take our staff, and we need to make these people where we can be competitive. The government is being competitive on the taxpayers' back.
That's right.
End of story. It isn't happening.
And we're, so we're the least competitive in the state of North Carolina then?
The least competitive?
Yeah, so, because we have the lowest tax rate in the state, so we're, we're doing less, we're doing less of it than anybody.
We've got $65 million budget, sir.
Yeah.
I've looked at eight, eight budget cycles since you've been here, and it has increased $25 million. And the only thing the taxpayers have gained by this $25 million in the budget is higher salaries and a larger government. That's what we've gained because our county's fallen apart.
Well, that's, yeah, in your eyes.
No, sir, in every, in most everybody's eyes.
I think we've got a pretty good county.
I think we've got some great county in the city.
I know we do. Oh, yeah. We got a paper.
And you also told us, told us in a meeting that we're 50% overstated.
I didn't say that in a meeting.
Oh, my lord.
Come on, John.
Derek, I'm going to tell you something, man. I'm going to tell you something. You have called me a liar four times in open session, so tonight, I ask for your resignation.
I thought you were lying right now. You are wrong.
I am a liar.
How long have I ever called you a liar?
That's what I'm holding down. Hold it down. This is going to be civil, or I'll ask the sheriff to remove anyone who's not.
If you can stand there tonight and say that you were not in a meeting with the chairman of this board, the county attorney.
John.
And tell us.
I'll say, I'll tell you that. I said, hey, you know what, John? Here's the deal. If you can get three more commissioners, if you can get two more commissioners to, if you don't like the job I'm doing, or you think that poorly of who I am, or you've questioned my character, and you can get two more commissioners to vote with you, you can have my resignation tonight.
It makes no difference to me, sir.
I'm not going back and forth with you.
Well, that's fine, but I'm just telling you, the budget of Macon County has increased under your watch. $25 million. We need new schools? I mean, the center, the center of county government, we met out there, Town Square right here, that's center of county government, and it looks terrible. Why don't we spend money to fix the things that we need? These kids don't have a track to run on. These kids.
Don't move in the lodges.
Would you please?
Figure out.
Figure out.
That's the chairman's decision. He requests a law.
But, no, I mean, there's, there's plenty of stuff right here that the county, the School of Government sent us, what are the original uses for, and here, here is, all this stuff came from the School of Government today, and it specifically says, you can no longer use these funds for retention pay or premium pay based on the federal government, and it says right here, if that is, if that is done, you are in violation of federal law.
What has been proposed and what has been set, motions been made on and seconded is completely legal, and if it is illegal, then I guess you'll fire me anyway.
No, the whole thing of this, you're wanting to take the money out of the General Fund and replace it with.
We're using it as revenue replacement, we're, 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 we're replacing expenditures that qualify for revenue replacement under the American Rescue Plan, and we're then using the county money, just as I stated, to re-estate what is now our retention pay policy through the remainder of the period, which is October of '24.
And it specifically says you cannot use these funds for increased salaries.
We're not. We're using county funds.
Okay.
So both of you went today to the School of Government, both of y'all went to the School of Government, but I'm hearing two different answers. Is that right?
Would you like to?
I'm checking.
Just ask the question.
That is, the information, yes. I've got the email verification from Karen Malonzi. We, Tammy can patch for it. I mean, you know, but the, at the end of the day, I just, you know, I just, uh, I don't know. It's, uh, it's concerning that.
Does that, does that answer your question? Were there counties who paid this money out in full?
Uh, yeah, I, I think if I'm not mistaken, uh, Swain County. From that article, I know that a lot of counties paid a lump sum.
Okay, those counties that paid for the lump sum, when the government stopped this back in April, whenever that was, did they go back and collect that money back from the employees? If that money was promised to them, give them money. It's bottom line. If the board had a problem with it, they shouldn't have voted that progression to begin with.
Different board. Who you asking?
Just make it happen.
Let me add a little bit to it. Hazel mentioned earlier about the vice, the vice of pockets we needed to unite and we do. And Chairman, I want to make a special mention here and express my views on this. Back in October of 21, I've been on this board for a number of years. Been through a couple of pay study reviews. And I always hesitate to commit taxpayer money. I'm very cognizant of where our money comes from. But in, leading up to October of 2021, we were engaged in a salary review process. And I was, I was the county manager, I know people numbers of times on this thing. And I was assured, that was a $2.3 million adjustment to the salaries. And I asked Mr. Rowland specifically, does this make us competitive? Oh, absolutely. That was not only you, but the other members of the board. This is going to make us competitive. And that's what we're interested in, is being competitive in recruitment, retention later. And, uh, so I was proud to vote for that. And, uh, we came into that meeting in October. And I'll just share a personal statement for you. Pulling the parking lot is full. So we come in, it's presented our salary review. I was excited. We were doing something for the employees to make their salaries competitive. We passed it. I think, I thought it passed unanimous. Nobody left the room. I said, whoop, bro, whoop, whoop. Somebody right here. Immediately, the salary review committee got up and said, well, that puts us on the, after being told repeatedly, this makes us competitive. The salary review committee representatives got up and said, that puts us on the goal line. We need to get in the end zone. Boom. Man, something hit. I said, go away, man. Set back in my chair and said, we have $6.9 million that we want to spend and out on salaries. It was like I'd been kicked. I've been, I took some licks in my life and I'll take more probably. But I've never had the feeling I had that night. I had been misled. The wind came out of me. I was physically sick. $6.9 million. That's the question. That's the wind, guys, wait a minute. Am I the only guy in this room that doesn't know anything about this? Everybody was just looking around like I was some kind, I was just a shadow. $6.9 million. I had no opportunity, none, to discuss. Maybe before we used it for America, it was probably, it could have been a high school issue, that's wrong. A lot of these options. Completely ignored. This is, this is the best thing since pockets on a t-shirt. I was defeated. I sat back. Man, this, I can't believe, I'm gonna let you finish. And I'm being told that we're going to use $6.9 million of taxpayer money. Completely defeated. Completely. I wanted to go home and just quit. And I slumped back in my chair and we looked, threw my hand up in the camp for vote. That was defeat. I don't know if those board members knew about it. I've been told that nobody in the room knew about it. I don't buy that story. So this thing was approved. I got, took my licks, threw down, proud of the boys, got the raise. Then in April of this year, the federal government said stop this premium pay. I thought this pony had been put to bed. I thought it was over with. Here we are again. We live in the same thing. And as an elected official, I couldn't care less if I win, lose, vote, whatever I do. I have the authority. I think this board as a body has a fiduciary responsibility of any money that comes into Macon County, that we at least have options of how that money is to be spent. The documents being passed around here, I do not know. But since we've opened this thing back up and we want to skin this onion again, here is my request. Oh, no, how much money came into Macon County through the ARPA, the ESPO, whatever, any kind of taxpayer money that came down from the government? I want to know the total amount. I want to know how it was expended. Doesn't have to be, I don't want an elaborate spreadsheet. I want one sheet. How much money did we get? I never had any vote, any opportunity to offer suggestions as a resident, as a taxpayer, as an elected official, as a businessman, how we could use it. I've earned money from 10 to 20 million dollars. I want a full accounting. I want that presented to us at the December meeting. And that will fall on you, Mr. Manager. This is taxpayer money. This is, this is not free money. And again, it may be the best thing, but I was assured and I voted confidently that we were passing a salary study that was going to make us competitive. And then I turned and just got slapped down with no input. Anyhow, that ain't how this board is gonna move forward. We are in charge of the finances of this county. And we can house it up here, walk through with it, walk through with it. Here we are again tonight. We, I have, I've not had any options. I met with the manager the other day and he said, we're gonna bring this back up. And I said, Derek, I'm gonna do it. It's dead. It died April the 20th when the federal government said this can't be used for premium pay. But I said, if you want to bring this up, Derek, and as, as the, as the chairman of the board, I could, I sent it to the gentleman. I mean, I don't, I let it go. If it's on there, I'll let it fly. I could have stopped this thing. But let's get it out. Let's go ahead and let's reveal this whole thing. I had to share. This has been very divisive. I'm still getting texts from employees, give us our money back. Well, then what was your money to start with? It was what we were told we were going to spend it on, not what we were asked we were going to spend it on. It was one option. What other options did we have? I still do not know. So since we brought this thing up, I want it put into bed. And if we're going to here tonight, I'll lose. I cannot vote to spend this money without knowing and exploring what options. If we're gonna use all that money to, to do capital improvements in this county, that would have been a great, a direct benefit to every taxpayer in the county.
Yeah.
Never was discussed to, never had, never was considered an option. So that's my take on this thing. My vote will be a solid no. Not on saying, hey, the county employees don't deserve this money. If they're not being paid a competitive salary, when we did that salary review study, somebody's not doing their job. That's just bottom line. Are we gonna keep crunching it up with this money? When this runs out in 2024, we're back to square one. Our employees are underpaid. Well, it's not my responsibility of this board to decide what the salaries are. That's why we have people who do this work. So I'm, I'm sorry. I, I told Eric that, it's not the personal, Derek, but if you're hoping this is gonna skin this thing back, we'll skin it back. And that's where I got hooked in on this COVID, whatever funds it was. Gee whiz. I don't even know how much we spent. But as long as we keep throwing taxpayer money away, we got a $33 trillion debt in this country. Oh, yeah, I've fed, well, that's my grandkids there. So I've asked for a request for you, Mr. Rowland, bring it back to us and, uh, at the, this here meeting, I want a full accounting. And we, any more comments, gentlemen?
I'd like to, I'd like to just add on to, uh, cause I know I come across with this stuff about county employees and employees. As someone who's been self-employed for the last 36 years, I understand employment. I understand you take care of your employees and, or you'll have employees. But somewhere along the line, there's a limit on how much you can take care of, um, of salaries and everything else. We do have a great group of people in Macon County working for this county. And, and I agree with you 100%. If we had a salary study and it failed, we ought to be going after whoever did the study and allowed that to fail. I'm not against county employee. There is nothing. When I walk through the boardroom, I'm all business. I have no personal agenda against anyone. But I will conduct business when I walk out of that boardroom at the end of the meeting, when it's adjourned. I'll go have lunch with you. I'll go have dinner with you. I'll go have coffee with you or whatever. Mr. Uh, commit, uh, manager, there is nothing about my comments personal to you. I know what I have been told by you. And if you think that, um, that I'm deaf, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman knows exactly what you said. The county attorney knows exactly what you said. And, and there's some members of the general public, you've also commented that too. And, um.
So John, in one breath, you say that I, that the county employee salaries have increased more than, than anyone, than, in over eight years than anything under my watch? And then the next breath, you say, I think that we got too many?
No, the whole thing that I said, the budget has increased $25 million in eight years, or nine years under your watch. And as far as I can see what's going on in this county, we have gotten bigger government and bigger salaries. And so we had the largest budget increase in Macon County history this year. Where did most of that money go?
Where it needed to.
To the salaries of the employees. That's exactly what I'm talking about. While our citizens out here are struggling to pay their grocery bills and everything else with no consideration. I have never, since I've been on this board, heard you say one word in concern about the taxpayers of this county.
Better get the lowest tax rate in the state. We are. Everything we do is built on efficiency. And we take pride in that fact, John.
Just clarify that lowest tax rate, we have the lowest per, uh, property tax, but when you figure in the, when you figure into fighter tax.
We're still in the top 5%.
We're still in the top 5, we're not the lowest.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know. Depending district by district.
Yeah, it's plain words. I want, just one thing, everyone, one question. Did all employees receive the $2 per hour?
All full-time and part-time, yes.
Regardless of, or level of rock. All gentlemen, we've heard discussion. Any questions stake on the floor? All in favor, is that a discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All vote like that. Here's speech, please. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Derek. Gentlemen, since we're in the hall, I want to. We'll take a five-minute break.
This is Bobby. I'm gonna have to shut down the feed so I can change batteries in this microphone. I will be back whenever they start the meeting again. Thank you very much for watching.
Hey, Gary, did you have, did you have a happy Veterans Day?
Yeah, first time, brother.
First.
First, first.
Make two patches.
So, well, how do you know we're recording?
When I press the red button.
Yeah, well, see, you've got red lights up there. Makes me think you're recording.
That means I can hear it in the background. Nah, I'm recording yet.
There's one stretch.
It's pretty tight, right?
I was a big old man.
Oh, yeah.
Head, is that big?
All right, I'm gonna go now.
Okay, this is Bobby with Macon Media. I've restored audio. I've changed batteries. And we'll get back to this meeting again in two or three minutes. Thank you all for watching.
It's pretty tight, right?
I was talking to that cop today.
How do you know that Macon County?
JD.
I was a big old man.
Oh, yeah.
Head, is that big?
All right, I'm gonna go now.
Okay, this is Bobby with Macon Media. I've restored audio. I've changed batteries. And we'll get back to this meeting again in two or three minutes. Thank you all for watching.
Well, I guess not.
All right, let's randomize. Or be wide-eyed, Derek. Three more of them. All right, considering, any of you that know business, tense, tense debate, change order for low-bowed wiring for an athlete building at Macon Villascoot, represented by Novus Architects Incorporated. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Neal. I'm, my name is Jeff Neal, and I'm with Novus Architects.
Turn your mic off.
Turn my.
There you go.
Thank you very much. It was turned off. My name is Jeff Neal, and I'm with.
Uh, my name is Jeff Neil, I'm, my name is Jeff Neil, and I'm with Novus Architects.
Turn your mic off.
Turn my...
There you go. Thank you very much, it was turned off. My name is Jeff Neil, and I'm with Novus Architects, and as Eugene says, I'm here to talk about a change order request for the Macon Middle School Athletic Building. Essentially, over the last couple of weeks, we discovered that there was a portion of the low voltage that was not included in the design documents, and hence is not included in the construction contract by CSE contractors. The low voltage systems affected are the access control, car readers, and the equipment to control the access control, the data, telephone, equipment, and fiber line, back to the main high, to the main middle school, the paging intercom system, the burglar intrusion system, and the security cameras around the building. These documents, these items were not included in the design documents, they are not included in the construction contract, uh, but we feel with the school that they are important facets to have the cooperation of the athletic building, that can practically function to serve the purpose and the function of the school and the students. Uh, now, I should say that the design of the building includes the infrastructure to support the installation of the low voltage systems, so there would be no rework involved in adding these systems, so, uh, so we're asking for, you know, the approval of the change order amount to allow the school system to enter in a contract, because they've got a project proposal from National Communications Inc., which is the low voltage preferred buyer and vendor here in Franklin for the school systems. Uh, they provided a proposal to the school board, or the school system, uh, on October 26th, composing those five items for a total of ninety-one thousand dollars for the installation of those systems, uh, opening up five various system items. Uh, I should say that, uh, the construction cost for the overall project is about 2.5 million, so this would be about a 3.5% change order for this project. Uh, however, this pricing proposal was direct from NCI to the Macon County School Board, this is not through the general contractor, and it's not through the general contract, so this would be a direct relationship between the school board, or the school system, and NCI funded with additional funds for the project.
Well, I don't mind to jump in here. I serve as liaison for the school board.
Yes.
And, uh, I see you guys back there, feel free to pipe in on what you need to, um, but, uh, you know, I guess politics change. When we first started talking about this, Scott Maslow was principal, you know, Mr. Baldwin was superintendent, we had Mr. K, and, uh, so on, and as the conversations keep changing, things change, you know, there's new principals, since then there's been another new principal, and the intent of this room, of this building, was to get the wrestling boys and girls teams out of our fairgrounds.
Correct.
So you can imagine, you know, this sterile issues and all the, you know, the things associated with the fair, that's where they were practicing. So that was the intent of the building. Since then, I have been kind of briefed on this, and I do understand they may, they may want to use this building for instructional and curriculum, so I think that's kind of where this has changed initially. I do think the intent was for wrestling, but I feel like they, you know, I think it'd be best to use property for the highest, and best to use for taxpayers' investments, so I feel like at the end of the day, this is a request that the school system would like at this point in time. I don't have a problem supporting it, I'd hate for the building to sit there and only be used two hours of the day, three months of the year, because they can't use it every day all day, so I think that's how we got here, and again, it's, Mr. Shields was there, I mean, do you remember anything different, Mr. Shields?
No, uh, yes, it's, it was a form of information that you talked about, um, I think we're in a situation here, if you got a low voltage wiring for the athletic building, uh, I think just have to bite the bullet and let's go with it. I mean, uh, but what was the pay on that?
Uh, the, the total of the five systems is, uh, around ninety-one thousand dollars.
Ninety-one?
Yes, sir, which is about 3.5% of the overall construction contract.
How much, how much is still in contingency?
I don't know, we answered the question.
I don't know.
But we do not know what was asked, and I can't find out. I know it was 10% on the project. And to date, we've only approved twenty thousand dollars in change orders on the project.
Talking about metal bills over here, and, uh, day one, started digging foot and had a change order. Who, uh, did y'all do the design work, Novus Architect?
Yes, sir.
Was this low voltage thing ever discussed?
Um, the, some of the low voltage systems in here, yes, were discussed, the, the data, the access control, and some of the security cameras. I think there is, um, a different opinion on what was included in our scope of work from the design contract versus what the school believed should have been included in our scope of work. Uh, we provided a design that would support the infrastructure to support the installation of the low voltage systems. So, um, I just learned about this issue about a week ago, so I've been trying to investigate the history of what's going on, and I'm still trying to, to dig through all the background and the details, I don't have an answer for any of that questions.
Somebody missed it.
Yes.
Is the architect, the contractor, the count, the school, somebody missed it, it wasn't the taxpayers?
The contractor wasn't involved in this scenario.
Alright, so you come to us for ninety-one thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And I represent the taxpayers, I don't represent any of those previous names that I mentioned, uh, uh, this is just, it's, it's, it's sad, I mean, change orders, I'm a contractor, and before I give a price, or before I attempt a project, I have a set of plans with scope of work, I defined my scope of work, and if I miss something, it's two hundred dollars or two thousand dollars in my life, where am I at? And, uh, I'm not, nothing personal in any of this, but, uh, if it comes to, hey, we made, somebody made this statement, we don't know who it was, we need to add one more thousand dollars, I will not be a yes hope today.
What are your other options? If we don't do this, build this thing, sir?
Uh, if we don't do this, the building will still be able to get its technical occupancy, but will not be able to be used to the fullest functionality ability to the benefit of the middle school. If, as, as the gentleman said, it would be used for the wrestling team.
We're trying to build a better Dino High School. I just can't, I don't, I'm, I'm flat against it, I, there, uh...
I think should be in full use, I think that's what we intended it for. Uh, I don't, I don't like this either, but I make a motion that we do a change order for low voltage wiring for the athletic building at Macon Middle School, uh, what'd you say, ninety-one thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, now, this would be not by a change order, it would be a construction contract, this would be a direct contract through the school, or the county, and NCI, the vendor.
We do have the funds to cover that, it would just be the remainder to the school.
We have the funds to, uh, to do that, yeah?
Yes, in contingency, we do.
I'll go back to my, uh, motion there, the change order for low voltage wiring for the athletic, athletic building at Macon Middle School, come out of the county, uh, contingency file?
Uh, no, come out of the project, again.
Project, Macon Middle School project, contingency file.
With a lock in the project.
That's my low voltage.
Second.
How do you live motion second? Pleasure, discussion?
And I don't like it either, I feel like for the building to sit, like, seven, three, or seven months out of the year, to use it three months, or a couple hours in each, um, somebody got the ball.
Your insurance, what about insurance? You make a mistake, is your insurance there ready yet? I think a few building lines went down.
I mean, I feel like the mistake was made when somebody overlaid plans, but I feel like we had the discussion about the intended purpose of that building, it was wrestling. But here's the problem, there's so many movement targets, three different elected officials, a new superintendent, two different principals, you know, and I will say, for the taxpayers' benefit, I feel like the building doesn't need to sit, they, they can have, I don't care what they have in there, they can have benefits for the community on Saturday morning, I really don't care, I mean, it's taxpayers' building, I think it should be used, and, you know, there's contingency, it happens in about every single project I've been involved in, never do you pull the trigger on a project and everything just go perfect, that's why they have contingency, so at the end of the day, it's within the budget we allocated, and, uh, I don't like to hear of this. Sorry.
This is my comment, uh, for that, those archa funds could have been used for that very thing.
Yep.
And it would save the taxpayers, buddy, but now we're going to go after the taxpayers for ninety-one thousand dollars.
Another discussion. Put a motion second, all in favor, signify, raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Three, two, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, sir.
I'll be getting that.
Thanks, John.
Uh, next to land, uh, discussion and consideration of resolution to amend the Fontana Regional Library Agreement. Mr. Grant, one.
Alright, so I played with this agreement, a lot of things have been going completely out of proportion, the reasons why we even went through this has been completely overlooked. All of this, in my mindset, in my thought process started out, because the fact that pornographic books are being distributed to kids through a library, this is a problem. Now, I'm, I still cannot understand, how's that even a topic that's up for discussion when we're talking about kids? No one said anything about the library being a bad place. We all support the library, we all love the library, got a great staff there, and I'm saying that, you know, ad nauseam at this point, to only every, almost every county commissioner, even two here in the public keep coming back, and saying things that we're absolutely not saying. Everything that's been revised in this agreement is for the benefit of everyone. I was not elected to serve a party, I was elected to serve the citizens of Macon County. I have a lot of people that I have conversations with that stand up, they oppose me on a lot of issues, but the awesome thing is getting to have level-headed conversations with people, even if we disagree, walking away from that, understanding just because we disagree doesn't mean we hate each other. And I personally am very tired of that rhetoric, because every single time there's a disagreement, that automatically means that we hate each other, I think that's the stupidest thing ever. The changes that were made on here were for the benefit of everyone in Macon County, not a party. If I'm not saying it enough, ask me again, you're gonna hear the same exact answer over and over again. All the changes that were made on here, this is public information, you're welcome to go back and look at the contract yourself. Furthermore, we're not the only county involved in this. The changes that we made were just changes made for Macon County, we have no idea what Jackson County's gonna come up with, we have no idea what Swain County's gonna come up with. At this point, it's to be put to a vote, and if we vote to approve this, let's hear what Jackson County and Macon, uh, Swain County have to say about the exact same agreement. We're not the only county involved in this agreement, and again, we have an amazing library, we have an amazing staff. I work with kids, I'm not one of those who deal in theory, I tell, you know, my students at the Quade School, there's one thing to do in theory, but then there's applied theory. Most people like to live in the theoretical, so as far as I'm concerned, while everybody's talking, my hands are in the mud, my hands are in the dirt, I deal with the casualties of everything that we're talking about here daily, I spend every day of my life cleaning up a mess that people left behind, because we as adults have forgotten the fact that there are morals that should be without question, no matter what side of the aisle you stand on.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Amen, amen, Jim.
At one point, you would forget that when it comes to kids, we all should be drawing the line, and the line is very simple, protect them. And nobody can prove to me at any point today, ever, ever, I should say ever, that if you're advocating that it's okay for a child to be reading pornographic material, I'm sorry, you're never gonna have my support on that. That's just dumb. It's pornographic material, for those that look at me and say, "Well, we don't have pornographic material," I'm sorry, but if there's an image of a child performing oral sex on another child, I'm sorry, is that not pornographic?
That's pornographic.
That is pornographic.
And it's in the books that are in our library, in a kids' section. How is that even up for discussion? We've lost our way in understanding that, again, they're morals, that should, it doesn't matter what side of the aisle, it doesn't matter what party you belong to, it's about protecting kids.
Thank you, Derek.
If anybody who wants to get, you know, anybody who wants to question me on this, listen, I wish you would. Every day, my life is dedicated to all the kids that I serve in this county, I'm on a second generation of kids, that means they grown up, they're adults now, and I have dead kids on my karate floor. I sell merchandise at my business, so for people that love for me to help raise their kids, I, there's gotta be a level of trust there. There's gotta be a level of trust there. This agreement is ma, the only reason why it's revised is because, A, the contract was up from 2013 to, to, uh, to 2023, we have to revise it. We revised it, made the necessary changes, we're gonna look forward to hearing from Jackson County, Swain County, to see what they come up with, because we're not the only ones in the agreement. We don't get to set all the rules, this isn't a dictatorship. So we have to wait for them, listen to what they have to say, all three counties come up with an agreement, and then go from there. But there's nothing that was changed on here that would even give credence to anybody saying that we think the library is a horrible place. That is not at all what's been said, period. This is about protecting kids, from my standpoint. Anybody has any questions, please come and ask, come have a conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
I get that we may not all agree, I understand that, but it doesn't mean that it's, everything's gotta turn into a circus where it's all about, "Hey, stop listening to the media with all that nonsense." I'm gonna say again, stop listening to the media with all that nonsense.
Right, yep.
We have common sense, use it. It's really simple. This agreement, I'd like to put it, make a motion that we vote on, uh, passing this agreement, that we can get it to the next two counties and get moving with all this. We've been doing this since January, this has not been an easy process, it's been a very difficult process. I thank God for all of you out there who've helped with this whole process, but guess what, hundreds of hours that go into this, we don't get paid for that. So it's called serving, and that's exactly what we've been doing. To approve the revisions on this contract.
And forward it to Jackson, Swain County.
Yes, sir.
For the review.
For the review? Yes.
And if they don't accept it, well, what's the next step?
We'll go to the next step.
Who's the next step?
Danny, uh, Commissioner, one, real quick on, um, paragraph eight, A, second to last sentence, that is an ambiguous sentence, so that's one, when we submit that, I will remove that sentence there, and the sentence I'm removing is, the second to last sentence, A, the withdrawal shall be effective one year from the date of notice, um, the next sentence is one that would, would be one of the control, which is the withdrawal shall be effective the following June 30th.
Right.
So that it coincides with the subject.
So, so with that, if, anyway, if I could ask you to amend that, your motion to approve
with that one reduction there, then we can move forward.
Exactly what you just said.
Yeah, that A.
Page six of nine, paragraph eight, uh, paragraph, Roman numeral eight, paragraph A, second to last sentence, six of A.
It was titled, "Set in C, the final statement, final sentence."
Roman numeral, John.
Eight, Roman numeral eight.
And, or, it's like, paragraph, first paragraph.
Of A, A, second to last sentence, where we're, we're adapting, the withdrawal shall be effective one year from the date of notice, um, in favor of the sentence that follows, which is the withdrawal shall be effective the following June 30th.
And also, I'm sorry, just to make one more comment, for the comments that were made about if this was made, it would have us to have an easier way to get out of the contract, if we wanted out of the contract, we would just said so. The fact of the matter is, we're trying to figure out a way that we can work through this in a good way.
Unity.
So, there's too many, there's too much division going on over just nonsense. This is a way of trying to work together with everything going on, and I get it, and when we work together, everyone's not going to be in agreement, I understand that, but please understand from this board, we're trying our best to work together instead of keep dividing. Yes, ma'am?
Francis, clarification. You said that, um, pornographic materials were being given to children at the library by librarians, correct?
No.
You just said that.
No.
Who was giving pornographic material to children at the library?
Ma'am, did you just hear me say that the librarians are giving pornographic materials? Or did you hear me say that there are pornographic materials in the kids' section in the library?
No, not in the kids' section. If that, that sounds like a crime, so if a crime is... If that, that sounds like a porn, so if a porn is pouring like that, there's pornographic material in the library?
I'm so glad you brought that up.
Then you, as somebody who is taking care of children, should have reported that porn.
Okay, well, I want to mention this one more. I'm so glad you brought that up.
Then why are you not?
The same book is protected by entities, but it's not protected by individuals. So in other words, the same book that should be found in that library that a child can go check out, as an individual, if I go give a child that same book, that makes me a felon.
How can a child check it out if their parents did not give them permission to have a library card? So if the parent is actually parenting a child, how did that child somehow magically escape the parent they're supposed to be being watched by and check out books on a card that they're not allowed to have?
Do you realize that a child that dropped off at the library can check those books out?
You can't check a child out, you can't drop off a child under the age of seven at the library, from seven up, they must be monitored. If they're being monitored, they're their parents, then their parents should be monitoring quite books they're checking out.
A twelve-year-old child.
A child is not allowed to have a library card until they're sixteen without the parental permission. Then I will not be interrupted, I will not be interrupted. So please help me, why a child who cannot get their own library card until they're sixteen without parental permission is being forced to check out pornographic books without the parents being able to watch? Where is that parent?
Okay, that's nice. Okay, we have an order of business.
He's saying that.
He doesn't have to answer, that question doesn't.
Ma'am, you want to not be interrupted, but at any given moment that starts speaking, you're interrupting, so no, you don't get an answer anymore.
Oh, okay, that's really good.
Amen.
You choose to answer the sentences that actually own libraries, right, Matt? I've noticed a lot of people that don't like that, they're not as eager, those actually don't have any libraries now.
That's Jackson and Swain, and MRA Wolves.
Let me jump in on some, let me jump in on some discussion real fast, uh, and I've been pretty quiet about this one, the library, the whole time. But, uh, you know, when I, when I saw Ms., I believe her name was Ms. Lampkin, she made the comment, if this is in good faith, this is a good document. And for me, it's in good faith, I really don't think I need to say anymore, I feel like we're trying, we just went through the fire department, uh, the volunteer fire department contract, where all the assets purchased in the department stay in that community. I feel like this is similar, the taxpayers of Macon County purchased the assets, and I, I think this contract is healthy for Macon County.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Lamper done, he did a fantastic job, and I think this is fair, and I just want to go on record and say it's in good faith on behalf, so you'll get it better.
And, uh, we, because it's in the form of a draft, that's going to Jackson and Swain, that's all it is. It's nothing in the hard stuff, it's just a draft for that to live here, that's what, that's what we have.
Okay, no discussion?
Yeah, uh, just a little of my input, what matters. Um, Macon County is not the only place that's had to brought these issues. I've watched videos of school board meetings, uh, watched library meetings, and these books that we're talking about, if someone gets up and starts to speak in public comment sessions, they are immediately taken out of that room by law enforcement.
Right.
And so, if I was to take one of those books that is in the library, in some cases, the public school library, um, and I was to start quoting some of this stuff, it wouldn't be a good picture. And just so you know, this has made it to, uh, made to Senate, because I listened to Senator John Kennedy
Yeah.
Actually quote
Right.
Some of these things in those books. And for anybody that thinks that that's appropriate information for a child, I, I don't understand where the thought process is. So, this is not something that's just unique to Macon County, Jackson County, or Swain County, Fontana Regional Library. This is going on across this nation, and in my mind, it must be stopped to protect these people.
Amen. Thank you, gentlemen, any further discussion? All papers, six and five, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen, no opposing votes, thank you, gentlemen. Full business, end date, discussion and consideration of resolution in support of innovation and modernization of the Franklin High School CTE program. Thank you County Schools Director, CTE Colleen Strickland, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, well, good evening, commissioners and members of the audience. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to speak to you about modernization and innovation for Macon County Schools Career and Technical Education, that would include all of our schools. So last month, we had the opportunity to submit a competitive Perkins grant in the amount of $5.1 million. I know when we met last month, we thought we were gonna, uh, apply for 4.8, but after we looked at all of the contributions and matched, we actually were eligible for $5.1 million. We haven't heard if we've gotten that grant yet or not, but the really incredibly positive thing that came out of it is a shared vision that is between Macon County Schools, the county commissioners, Southwestern Community College, and our local employers. So we have this opportunity to talk about this really positive thing that we have. So we asked last meeting for a resolution that would be in support of modernization and innovation of CTE on behalf of the Macon County County Commissioners. And with, um, Mr. Rowland's support, he's drafted a resolution in support of modernization and innovation, and that's gonna allow us to have a stronger case when we continue to apply for more grants. I'd like to take that opportunity before Mr. Rowland reads the resolution to introduce some of our CTE teachers. Some of them had to go, but it's important that you realize the talent that we have in Macon County. We wouldn't be able to have twenty pathways and have earned over nine hundred credentials last year without the talent base of our teachers. So, some of them had to leave. Ms. Penny Moffett was here earlier, and she teaches our students project management. Heather McClure teaches early childhood, and she has a pre-apprenticeship, and she asked for me to invite you to our pre-apprenticeship signing day, that's on December first, and that'll be at the Drake Education Center, so I have some invitations for you. The students will be presented with $500 bonus checks, that's quite the event for them. Diana Cave is here, and we talk about what matters today. She's teaching a EMT class at Franklin High School. We're planning on having thirteen kids complete that. We're planning on them passing their tests and being basic EMTs in January. That's what matters today. Larry Pickens is here, he teaches welding, and the students who complete his class get a certificate from Southwestern Community College. When we talk about what matters today, Mr. Pickens is also teaching Public Safety One and Two, and we were able to add the second course because of county commissioner's support with the budget in the spring. And as a result of that, those students are learning all four areas of public safety, and then he will be graduating, the students who will be ready to be hired as dispatchers. So we talked about that being the need, we heard that today, that's what matters today. And then we also have Josh Brooks here with us tonight, and he's responsible for all curriculum, all assessments, and all credentials that students earn with CTE across all of our schools in Macon County. And when I think of Josh Brooks, I think of him as the glue that keeps it all together. We appreciate your continued support and advocacy for CTE. We will work together to get the jobs and the training for students that this community needs, and we just want you to know that we appreciate you listening and allocating funds and supporting and communicating with us.
Can you take three minutes to talk about aviation program and what we did the other day at our school?
Oh, yeah, can I take three minutes to talk about aviation? I could ta, I, I will talk for three minutes. Um, so, we do have the second aviation, public school aviation program that's supported through career or technical education in the state of North Carolina. And actually, tonight, we, our two teachers, Kevin Strickland and Scout Hannah, are flying back from Florida because they are at the AOPA, um, You Can Fly High School Symposium, and they've had the opportunity to meet astronauts and network and find out some more resources so that we can get some flight times for our students. But, um, what Mr. Shields is asking about is, on Wednesday, we took our students out to the Macon County Airport, and they had opportunity to have a tour of the facility, and they had opportunity to get in the Cessnas, and they had an opportunity to fly the Cessnas. Fourteen students had an opportunity to fly, and they got to meet three pilots who flew over from Andrews, who have these nineteen forty-seven planes that are called Swifts, and they're all prone. And it was an amazing opportunity, some of the parents came out and met, um, with the kids right before they got to take their first flight. Some of the kids have never flown before, some of the parents have never flown before, but they got to see their child take off at our airport, on our runway, from our teachers. So, because I taught here for three minutes about aviation, absolutely. So.
Where's Josh Brooks at?
Stand up, Josh.
Also, looking at former Mr. Rowland here, former president of Franklin High School, wrote this program for Franklin High School, and we appreciate that, if you know, I see kind of give it back there for your help.
It's been a wonderful experience with the kids, I got to go up to the airport as well, uh, and my new role is Chief Academic Officer, um, I deal with K-12 curriculum, and, um, this Coleen invited me out there. Um, I've been involved in aviation for about nine years now, uh, previously to other schools I've been in, and, um, Coleen has kind of taken bull by horns and taken us to that next level. Our aviation program, for the amount of things we have in there, we have standard R simulators, and in my opinion, our program is second to none. But, um, she's done an amazing job, uh, so is Mr. Brooks back here, bringing that program off the ground, and just in one day, in an afternoon, having fourteen students have the opportunity to fly in a plane is absolutely amazing.
It is.
And it's not like they just set the plane and they did nothing, they actually flown the plane because of all the log time they've logged in on the flight simulators. I mean, they're to the point to where they can almost fly a plane on their own because of all the time they recruit on the simulators during school hours and after school as well in the club. So they've really worked hard to have that opportunity, and, um, Ms. Strickland and Josh has kind of brought all that to fruition, and it's been amazing to watch. How old were you out there with us, Steve?
They're young.
Ten, tenth grade, eleventh grade?
Ten, tenth, eleventh, um, so we have a couple of seniors, it's a three-course sequence, students need to go through the three courses, and at the end of the third course, they will sit for their private pilot's written exam. And then after that, they need to have forty hours of flight time to become a private pilot. And so, what we can provide right now as a school district is we can provide a teacher, we can provide the assistant who runs the simulation lab, and then we are, um, trying to raise money to provide the flight time for students. And so our goal is to be able to provide at least five hours of flight time for the students, but they really need to have forty hours. And so that's why we're pursuing some of these other grants too, because, um, we wanna make sure that if they're really interested in being a pilot, some of them really wanna be a pilot, some of them wanna be a mechanic. So we need all of that. Um, but we, we are trying to pursue ways to get them their forty hours or as close to that as possible.
I'm dying to know, uh, do you rent an airplane?
Oh, yeah, you can run an airplane, yes, so there are two Cessnas at, uh, the Macon County Airport that are available for rent, and so, um, There's three, are there three, okay, I didn't know that, so next time, we'll get more than fourteen kids who fly then.
Four here.
Um, so, yes, you can rent them, and then we, um, also paid for a flight instructor that flew the planes for us. Um, they, we let the kids fly, um, once they got up, really, they weren't like taking off or landing yet, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a couple weeks, don't you think?
Mrs. Colleen, um, I just want to thank you for the passion that you have for this program and these kids. I've listened to you speak, and it's the same, it's just the glow on your face, and it's about getting these kids prepared to, to be productive, hopefully in this community, because this community needs these people, but I just want to thank you because you're, it's just a ray of sunshine.
It's definitely my honor, and our, our teachers are talented, you won't find better teachers.
Now, this, uh, are we to make a motion, or is Mr. Rowland already taking care of this?
Uh, we have the resolution here, it simply, uh, we approved the letter of support last month, this resolution simply, uh, highlights the same points we made in that letter.
All right.
We will need to approve the, this resolution if we want to.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion, approve the resolution as presented.
All papers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Where are we, I see you like that now.
Thank you so much, have a nice evening.
Next on the agenda, did you want updates?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Mr. Gibbs, secure my call to the same, please, sir.
Sure.
Now, what happened, please, Mr. Gibbs birthday?
Could have wanted a birthday.
Did you get any birthday dinner?
Uh, no, particularly, it's been entertaining, let's put that one. Not that you have a microphone. I use my principal voice. I use my principal voice.
No, so I just wanted to kind of open up the discussion, we have ongoing engagements back at Macon Middle School. I wanna talk about the track, maybe we keep kicking around the super gas, and we keep talking about playing the Halo. Mr. Hickman and I have talked about it for, I know for a year that I've been here, but I wanted to see if we had any kind of progress.
Do you wanna start on the track, middle school track? Um, we've released, um, as of November first, an RFQ for design professionals who will take the project on, spec it out, um, release specs for bids. Uh, that RFQ will close November thirtieth, sorry, December first, um, it'll be reviewed by the liaison committee, uh, as to who will be the most qualified design professional to come up with specs, uh, and then enter in negotiations with that design professional on what it would cost to redo that track. So we're in the process of the RFQ.
And, uh, where do we end up at the super gas?
Me and Tracy Towne have not had any complaints at all since Haynes Corporation put in gas backflow preventers in the manhole where this wastewater is collected from the gym and the locker rooms and the kitchen. And then it goes into the town municipal water treatment system. Haynes feeling was that there was, since that is the end of the line for the water treatments, the municipal water treatment system on that trunk, is that we needed some sort of gas backflow preventers that would keep municipal smells, if you will, gases, from coming into our building. from coming into our building. They installed those in the manhole right there at the gym. They have eliminated about eighty-five percent of the gases, the frequency and the strength. Um, we've not had any complaints. I did go out to the middle school yesterday, talked to the two PE teachers, they said, yes, they do smell it on occasion, nowhere near what it was, and not on the frequency. We've all theorized with those teachers and Tracy Towne and maintenance guys, is that when you have a change in temperature and cold air and fog settles, usually in the morning, it keeps the gases in the building instead of releasing. And if there is a crack somewhere in that vent pipe, then it is more likely that you're gonna smell it. It's gonna be in the building because the air outside is settling, not letting it vent. So what we're gonna do is, is put a, um, low CFM fan on top of that vent for that building to see if we can draw the remaining fifteen percent of that smell, that gas, out.
I know in our, one of our last discussions, our liaison meetings, you know, really, I wanted to bring this board, it's more or less now an exploratory kind of surgery. If we were to pursue this any farther, we're kicking, you know, or cutting out sections of the wall. So I think this board needs to be aware of that, and if we wanted to let this thing lie, kind of leaving it alone with the CFM fan, or we start cutting into the wall, it's gonna be more exploring. I just wanted to bring that to this board and see if you want to just kind of let it go, or if you want to pursue that any further. Middle school, so as, it's been discussed multiple times, you know, there's two layers, two widths to block, and there's a section in the middle, and that's the issue. You simply cut out the section of the block and maybe scope it and kind of find, isolate the issue and maybe cut it again, just kind of keep cutting holes to be not as far. That's really where we're at, so I think this board needs to be able to wire that.
Is that bid, is that bid stack being cameraed?
I'm sorry, spin up.
Is the bid stack being cameraed?
Yes, yes, sir. By Haynes Corporation. Yes, sir.
Where's Haynes at?
Asher. MB Haynes.
What was there, uh...
There were some breaches in the vent pipes that they could see as far as they could go down. But that just, there are vent pipes that are running under that slab, they could not get there. They could get through the top and, I don't know, six, eight feet, ten feet down, but they couldn't, there's plumbing running under the slab that they could not get to. So they couldn't scope the whole thing.
But they did find breaks?
There were some breaks, yes, sir.
I mean, you can pinpoint those with the camera.
Yes, sir.
If you have a locator, you can tell.
That, that may not be the only breaks in this system, though.
They should go somewhere. I mean, sewer gas, if I worked in this one, I've known most of my life, sewer gas can, whether you smell it or whether you don't. Uh, it's just not acceptable with me, because I've known about this sewer problem, sewer gas for a long time, and I don't know, yeah, we don't want to pay it, but we have to fix that. I mean, that's just, there's no, there's no excuse to let this one have to start somewhere in my humble being. And there are cameras even on two hundred feet, I mean, there's, I mean, this is the big thing, camera, or leak, leak detection, and, uh, rather just start cutting out holes in walls, these cameras, the pinpoint, if they're radar, I mean, you know.
Yes, okay.
This is my thought.
I just want, I just want to check the box, really, I don't, you know, I wanted to bring it forward to the board and see what you guys wanted to do, but really, if we keep kicking around this item, it's been on back and forth for a couple of years.
But I, I think, I'm with you, and I'm not sure we know what fix is or how to fix that. I'm with you. I don't know what we're...
Exactly where it is.
The companies specialize in leak detection, that's massive, international companies, leak detection.
And we need to bring a engine, uh, to find a solution.
There was a fix, you wouldn't have necessarily, you can, you can line a pipe anymore, you know, a pipeline, that's another big business. If you have a sewer leak, you just simply line it. So it doesn't matter if that pipe, I mean, these things build through T's and Y's, there are professionals out there that can do this, equipment engagement. And, uh, leak detection, pipeline, big, big, big industries.
Can you do that, Mr. Gibbs?
I, I can.
Do this in January?
I can seek out a liner, a leak detector, however, whatever is the kind of...
The leak detector can tell you what you need to land, if, if landing is an option. Leak detection is a big, I mean, you've got, they, they travel the world detecting leaks and sewer, you know, this is a small job, and it needs to be done.
And what about Nantahala?
Uh, Nantahala wastewater treatment plant, uh, just trying to be real quick here, uh, as a reminder, in two thousand fourteen, we had a North Carolina Department of Public Construction engineer by the name of Bob Dewis draw out a new wastewater treatment plant for Nantahala, uh, school, because his feeling was, uh, that that plant needed to be replaced. Um, it was, it was, and it's still operating within the parameters set forth in our permit. Um, we have an operating responsible charge who ensures that. Um, I akin him to a tire engineer. He doesn't care what the car looks like, as long as the tires will turn over and transport that car down the line. He doesn't care what the, thank you, the wastewater treatment plant looks like, as long as it's putting out the discharge within the parameters of the permit. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, I sent those plans to, um, Min Zhao at the North Carolina Department of, uh, Environmental Quality to try to get those plans engineered stamped. Uh, were okayed by them, she sent, or he, whatever that is, sent back to me that they need to be engineered stamped, so I went to a local engineer, um, went back and forth about a year, never got anything, uh, pulled it from that local engineer due to inactivity, went to Harper Construction to see if they would still help us. Uh, they enlisted the services of Black and Beach Engineering after going through McGill Associates, who declined to work with Harper Construction for whatever reason. Uh, Harper Construction came up with a plan with the engineering of Black and Beach. Um, I think you guys have seen the, uh, proposal that Harper Construction has submitted. Um, what, uh, Ms. Britton handed to you were some questions, uh, that the county commissioners had added in the past about the six hundred fifty thousand dollar wastewater treatment plant proposal, um, and those are some of the answers from, uh, Justin Jones at, uh, Harper Construction in correspondence with Black and Beach Engineering.
Which came from our liaison meeting that we had in September, following our September board meeting, that Mr. Shields and Mr. Higgin were in attendance, and we discussed this issue when we presented the proposal.
Uh, we do have, uh, Tracy Towne told me that, um, he, one of his maintenance guys about twelve years ago was down in one of the holding tanks, welding on a patch plate on it. Uh, Tracy doesn't keep records of that, that's just an emergency fix. We go do, we use whatever metal we can to make sure we get that plant back up and running. Um, so those are the types of things that, it is lined with a plastic liner as of right now, that was done at the behest, according to Tracy, um, that we do that to make sure that the, uh, concrete block in the sand pit is not leaked, because the plastic won't leak. Apparently it was leaking before. Um, that's another reason, uh, why it was suggested that we redo the wastewater treatment plant there.
Oh, you're, uh, did you say that would be, want to be based on the data, the system's getting from waste, three comma zero zero, is that?
Supposed to be three thousand gallons per day. That was the suggested, uh, capacity of a new wastewater treatment plant by Bob Dewis, NCDPI engineer back in two thousand fourteen. Talking to Justin Jones today, he said that we could maybe do a two thousand twenty-five hundred, uh, gallons per day capacity to, um, you know, it would cost you a nominal amount of money less than a three thousand gallon capacity per day.
Now, who issued RFQ for a design professional?
No, we have not done an RFQ. We, uh, we didn't think that it was gonna be above a thou- five thousand hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, because the bid, not bid, the estimate we got in two thousand, I have to go back and look, two thousand twenty-one from Harper Construction was three hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we thought we were gonna be under five hundred thousand dollar threshold, which obviously was not. And, and we were informed by our board attorney that we can do a design bid building process. Design, uh, design building.
Design.
Design building, sorry. Design building.
Uh, you said it, man. I just, I, we've been down this, we've talked about this thing, I like a lot of things, it's been, it's been way down. Uh, sometimes it's, but anyway, haven't been in the wastewater business most of my, my life. These systems are expensive to construct. They're discharge permits, international permit, MDDS permit, the discharge pollution, the muddy pollution into a stream. We're discharging into the Nantahala River, an outstanding, outstanding resource. Uh, they're absolutely great when there are no other options, just like I addressed Mr. Big, Big Manager up over there. I like options. There are other options besides discharging into the Nantahala River. One is an on-site wastewater system. And I've talked to soil scientists, we could talk about this for a year and a half or so. There are local soil scientists that we've tried to engage, uh, one of their neighbors, family has land, they've given us permission to go on to look specifically at an on-site septic system, and we still ain't got there yet. It's, uh, and if this plant fails, bingo, discharge is, it doesn't put the school out of business. There's a thing called pump and haul. We can haul this waste forever, and still not let the school, so I don't, I don't know what the issue is, I don't know, I've offered some suggestions, just like the leak detection. Uh, an on-site wastewater system, if it's a viable alternative, it would be cheaper, it would, you wouldn't have to send someone over there every day in a county vehicle to check this plant. Why, see here? And, uh, so I don't, I don't know how we get to the point of looking at different options. That's all I'm interested in, when I start kind of spending the money, is whether I'm going to buy a car, and this one's six thousand dollar, well, what are my options? What does it, you know? That's where I'm at on this thing. If we can, we just, something just needs to happen when we start exploring options on waste disposal for Nantahala. If we put it out for an RFQ, they're, they're a design professional, everybody's making profit to handle this system. So, that's all I gotta say about you bothering that.
Listen, this, this is out of my realm. That's why I brought it up more or less for discussion, because I feel like we keep, we keep kicking the can. And again, the high school keeps coming up, and we have all these lingering items that I want to put to bed, and we've talked about this forever. And personally, John and I had, Commissioner Sherrill and I had a discussion this morning, maybe the attorney can help me out. The difference in an RFQ and an RFP, we solicited an RFQ, they still don't give us a price. So then we have to come back through the whole process again, go for an RFP. So why don't we just solicit an RFP for design? I mean, if that's the way this board wants to go, let's just see what it's gonna cost, see what the scope entails, and see what the design looks like, and then we can either pull the trigger, or we can work on it. I just feel like we keep kicking this can, I just want...
It's going anywhere.
It ain't going anywhere. I mean, if we need to look into property acquisition, I feel like that's something we can direct the attorney into. We need to, you know, I don't like at all the sound of putting this into the Nantahala River. I think that's our worst-case scenario, and that's what we're doing right now, so I don't have any problem. You're the section man.
Well, I said, this is when we first started off, I even talked to the property owner in Nantahala, she gave us permission to enter her property. You know, nobody ever entered her property, did an evaluation, and hey, why you just get, you just give it, but...
Man, what is the process for entering that, that evaluation, to get onto the property? Like, who initiates that? What, what can we do to keep propelling this forward?
If the property is still labeled, this bit, what, a year, two ago, uh, that I talked to her, and she said, yes. And I said, well, we need that in writing. And even talked to the local soil scientists, the people that do this for living, local guys. Uh, Mountain Soals and I am partners with them and other businesses, not in this particular on-site, what we're doing out here. My friends of mine, well, we're to the health department, we know where it's at. And, uh, I said, you know, the school board need to engage you to go evaluate this property and say, no, we can't do a septic system, then we go design this, this sort of system. But no one's ever contacted Mountain Soals. Maybe they have, maybe it just fell through the wheels. I mean, these guys are busy, they're booked up.
This, this Mountain Soals, Mr. Ledford?
Yes, Mr. Ledford.
Yeah, he and I have had numerous conversations. The last conversation was that he was going to look for suitable pieces of property, and then I didn't hear anything from him, so I called him back, and he said, well, let me get back on that, I thought you guys were going a different route, and I haven't heard anything back yet.
Well, it was published in the paper during the process, the Black and Beach, that's where he, you know, where I did that, I thought we had them look for an on-site system and then where it was. And even Lord told me, we did, now they should contract for Black and Beach, but that's a national company, and we just need to explore our options. Contract with a soil scientist to evaluate a particular piece of property to see if we can put an on-site wastewater system to accommodate Nantahala School. It's all based on the load of that system. Number of students dictates how much wastewater is created. Engage with them, it's gonna cost a few thousand dollars. If they say, no, it cannot be done, then we've got to have an engineer design, or design, build a wastewater treatment plant, the worst option that we can have. And that's where we're at on it. But, and there are other soil science groups in North Carolina, Walter Ferguson, uh, they're all man needs. We have local talent right here in Macon County that's capable of some of, uh, we've talked about this for a couple of years, don't think to be short, but...
No, you're not, I'm, this is, I'm on a learning curve, you know, I'm here, my spiritual gift is being a squeaky wheel, so that's why I'm here tonight, is just to keep bringing this to your attention, because it's an issue. And I know, I hear you and I believe you, that this can be, there's options if it were to fail, but the reality is, it's been on our radar for the last nine years. So it's nine years closer to failing. It might be nine days or nine months, but we've got, and, and the struggle that we've had, that Mr. Gibbs has had with his timeline, is getting people to go to Nantahala, to look at the work, to do the work. So, we were honestly, as a board, very excited when we got this proposal from Black and Beach, because it was a solution that we had been working on since January, when we came together and we itemized the different priorities that you had in mind.
It didn't fit the protocol.
It, it didn't fit the protocol. But hey, I'm ready tomorrow, we'll go in, we'll do what we need to do, you've got to just give us some direction, and we'll keep squeaking that wheel.
I feel like we're stepping in our bounds, but I will offer some suggestions, you know, I am a professional in wastewater business, and we solve these problems every day. But, but that's just my, my recommendation. Uh, you know, these are friends of mine, and we're associated in other businesses, I don't, I'm not taking it or, I'm just saying, find a reputable soil scientist, you know, consulting group to tell you what to do. You don't need a fancy engineer or, uh, to tell you what they do, they're just a simple process. Anyway, enough on that. Just thank you.
Take away the soil scientist, and, uh, do you give that to him?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we need to solicit an RFP? Are we gonna put scientists on the road?
All right. I may, I need to...
I've got, I've got Mr. Ledford's number, I will call him again.
I say call three, call three people.
Okay.
And at least we do that call relatively fast, I'm referred to, and...
Okay.
Thank you, Steph.
And happy birthday.
Happy birthday, dude. Oh, it's still my birthday.
This has been a rather contentious night, we ended up personal. Uh, well, real quick, while we're, we're sailing down ahead.
Let's go.
Jack, don't get up. How's the library going? Library community?
We're, we're, we're gonna finish the frame, we need to your frame. I hope that we...
Excited to get that done. All right, and look here again, folks. A wood creek. Scott Cole's out here, isn't he? That's little Scott Cole. That's little Scott Cole. Discussion and consideration upon release for Old Wood Creek LLC. Be daylight, time you get on.
Appreciate it, guys. And while you're on that, why you mention that, Paul? And I know that there, there may be a commissioner or two here that's got some promote, proposed changes to some ordinances that'd be a lot for us to look at. When we get into that, this is one of those that needs to be looked at. We can accept land disturbance bonds, never have to come for you guys. We can release them, never come for you guys.
You bring us a recommendation?
Yeah.
On anything you see on any ordinance?
Yeah.
And we'll act.
There's two that Joe and I talked about lately that'll, that'll help with several restrictions, constraints in this county, that'd be a third.
Yeah.
Joe, let's bring that up to the planning board.
Yeah. And if, and if you guys would like some, you know, eyes on this to make sure that, that me or Caleb, either one, this camp, this is our new county planner, if you guys haven't met Caleb Gibson yet, this is our new county planner. If you don't, you know, feel like there needs to be another set of eyes on it, I think that the planning board would be a place for these bond releases. You know, not necessarily bringing this, this is kind of not important in the grand scheme of what we're doing in the county government for you guys, I don't think.
You run those through the attorney? When, when these things come up?
Yeah, we've talked about this before, that this is not.
You don't come up to solution?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, well, anyway, we'll get, we'll get through this here tonight. Mr. Cole, Old Wood Creek LLC, he entered into a bond agreement with us back in February of twenty-two. We released part of that money in October of twenty-two. The original bond is fifty-one thousand and twenty-five dollars. We have released thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which leaves eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars left that we're holding. This bond is for some community septic systems, it's a paving. We already released the community septic system money, and the paving is now complete, and Mr. Cole would knock that money to be returned to him, so he could pay his paper. So I'm recommending that we release that money to him.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to release the remaining bond in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars as requested.
Say it. I'll say it. Any discussion? All right, so you can put a raise your hand.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Y'all want to hang around?
I'm, I'm helping him out.
You got a good thing, man, you got a proper station there. Thank you, thank you, Joe.
Keep up the good work, clear.
Discussion regarding Town of Franklin's social district and use of the gazebo and clock tower squares. Town of Franklin, Councilman Danny Philbever and Councilman Stacy Giffey.
I'm not Councilman Stacy Giffey.
Stacy Giffey is.
Goffy turned into a pumpkin and had to go home.
He hasn't leave, so I get to really.
Thank you, welcome. Hi, Amy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Councilman Goffey asked me to give just an overview of what social district was and what discussion they had had. Social districts have been approved by the North Carolina legislation, legislature since 2021, with some updates that were done in 2022. A social district is simply an outdoor area that's designated where people can consume alcoholic beverages. Social districts are regulated by the state as well as the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Commission. There are currently thirty-eight municipalities in North Carolina that have social districts, with Silva being the closest to us. Social districts have to comply with several requirements. It won't be just carrying around alcohol out and about. There are specially designed and designated containers, branded cups for alcoholic beverages. You have to have a specific map geographically outlined, you have to have specific signage, and other boundaries and operations during specific timeframes. It can't just be morning, noon, and night, there have to be specific ones. Town council has been considering the social districts since their retreat in February of 2023, and they have had multiple business owners, event promoters, and restaurants who've actually, actually come to council meetings and requested consideration for a social district, so that there could be additional events held downtown, one of which is the Eighties Flashback Weekend. Of course, that has gotten so big that it's expanded past the boundaries of either of the two breweries, and being able to have that specific area downtown in a social district would allow for more event to happen there. Unfortunately, at this point, we do have one clause in the rental, or the lease agreement that we have between Macon County and the town that does not allow alcohol on the leased property that we have, which is the gazebo square. And the proposed district would actually include Stewart Street as well, so in order to get from Stewart Street up to Main Street, it would make sense to include the clock tower square as well in that particular social district, just as a connector in the fact that the gazebo and clock tower squares have more seating. We would exclude Rankin Square because of the monument and the fact that there's not a lot of seating there. But the request from the town would be to waive that particular clause in the lease, and then also to include the clock tower square in the social district. So I'll let Councilman Culpepper tell you what the councils.
I'm, I'm not a good salesman, I'm better at, at discussions, so if you have any questions for me. But I, I will say this wasn't done with no reservations from the town council, and we did have concerns, we looked at it, we had the folks from Silva come over and actually talk to us about social district. Of course, the concerns about drunk people laying in the street and all that was the version of flags that came up, and people expressed those concerns, and, and we feel confident that that, that this is not what that is, that this is not what that is. We feel good that we're not going to lose control, and it will actually be a benefit to, to the town and the community. I'll stop there, but I'd love to answer any questions you have for us.
I've got a question.
Mr. Schu.
In your calls, you increase to secure what you're, a social, what you call it, a social?
Social district.
Social district, what's the cost of that?
I, I don't think there is any.
The only cost that actually is associated with that is the cost of the purchase of the cups that you have to have specially designed, and the signage that outlines the designated area. As far as police patrols and everything like that, that's still going to be the same as it always was.
And that was a big concern in Silva, was, was having to have increased police presence, and that has turned out to not come true. They're not having any impact on their, on their downtown police force.
One other question. Serving on the TDC group, this hasn't been discussed, and TDC is not a, it's more of a chamber thing, but it hasn't been discussed, pro or con, and I'm on that committee, I feel a little odd sitting here without having that discussion with them. And I think a week from, a year, a week from tomorrow, a week from tonight, we have a TDC, or an evening, we have a TDC. For me to have a vote, I'd like to discuss it with them, to see what, what their, when you talk about tourism, develop a committee, I'd like to have their input.
That, that's fair. But just to reframe it, we're not asking you guys to vote on it if it's okay or not in downtown. What we're asking for more is, it would make it a lot easier for us to have an existing social district if we can use the county-owned properties, which would require a change in the lease. I, I don't, I can't speak for our board, I don't know what we're going to do, but I, I do think that we see enough positive impact in this that we would like to move forward. We'd like your help in accessing the squares, but I, I do think it's wise to, to discuss it with other boards.
I heard you say that you need to change the lease.
Yes, sir.
With the county?
Yes, and maybe five years ago, maybe six, when, when our lease, when our lease renewal was up, talking about renewals of contracts. It, it wasn't in there before, but it got put in there by a previous county board. We lease it for a dollar a year, that no alcohol be allowed on town square.
That's what the lease?
That's what the lease, that's what the lease currently says, yes.
And we haven't moved any further in the process related to a social district. I mean, there's still multiple steps that have to occur over this next few months, and including being permitted through the North Carolina ABC Commission. But this is a big hurdle obstacle step, whichever you wish to refer to it as, because if you can't have alcohol on the two main squares, then the only place anybody would be able to sit would be on sidewalks.
What happens for our ball parks and things like that with no alcohol and stuff like that?
The social district is only from town hall through, down to the end of Porter Street.
I'm with you on that, but are we starting to get into a little race here with somebody else wanting our parks to be able to have alcohol in, or you heard anything like that?
I don't think so, and specifically, the county owns the squares, but we actually lease it, so we're kind of the landholder there, so it would require somebody to lease a county park. I don't, I don't think it changes the prohibition on alcohol on any other county-owned properties, just specifically the, the downtown squares.
Would it be, could somebody use the situation? You landed, happened downtown, you gave the leases to them to use alcohol. Now out here, when you have a ball tournament somewhere like that.
That still falls under your auspices, those rules, rules still apply for you, no alcohol.
And, and yeah, I think that Macon County being a dry county, that's a whole other topic of conversation that probably should be discussed openly, but I think that would be disallowed just under that, that, that the county is still dry, it's only the town that's wet, and this is a special law that the legislature passed that allowed for downtown social districts to, I guess, provide an economic incentive to, to local municipalities.
This is just affecting town, that Macon County.
Correct. And I don't know if you have a packet, in the packet?
There's a map.
It actually shows the map, it's literally just, just downtown, the two blocks of downtown, or maybe it's three blocks.
Out of curiosity, what did your brewery say on the west end and the east end?
Lazy Hiker's been a huge advocate for it from the beginning conversation. I don't believe we've heard from Curdie, because they are not involved in the district, at, at, at this time, anyway. It, it's out of the perimeter, Curdie is.
Don't worry about it, because we're playing it, we're getting it.
That's not, we, we don't, we can keep talking about this, I don't, I don't.
No, we're good, I think we're good. Heard your presentation, thank you for the presentation. What's your favorite board?
I'll, I'll add one more thing, if I might, because I would have rather been home doing my homework with my kids, so I'm going to segue into that. I'm a dad, I have a fourteen-year-old son and an eleven-year-old daughter, and my concerns surrounding drugs and alcohol are the same concerns that all of y'all have and all the people in this room have, and I'm scared to death of it. But I will tell you, as having a teetotaler father who said that alcohol was the devil, that didn't help me growing up, it didn't. I thought a twelve-pack was the goal when I was sixteen, or eighteen, or twenty-one, when I could get my hands on alcohol. I didn't know that you could go to dinner and that you could have a beer, or you could go out socially and have a beer or two with friends. That was never represented to me. So will my kid potentially see a drunk person on the street in Franklin? Maybe. But they see crackheads on Depot Street right now. I can't keep them out of my properties down there, like, we have drug and alcohol problems, so this goes to a bigger thing, like, I, I'm scared too, I'm scared for my kids. But I look at this as more of a teaching moment to be like, hey, kids, look, you can go to Eighties Flashback Weekend and you can have a good time. And these parents and commissioners and town council members and leaders of the community can go out and enjoy a moment with friends and not just get absolutely annihilated, hammered. I think it's a teaching tool. I think it's a way to teach people to be responsible adults. I also wanted to add that if you look at the map of dry counties in the United States, and you look at the map of meth lab proliferation, proliferation in the United States, they correlate. Dry counties don't keep alcohol out, they actually encourage more illegal drug use. So again, this is a much bigger topic than just social districts, but I'm scared for my kids too. I think this is more likely to help than it is to hurt.
But your dad did a good job. Don't beat him up on it.
Well, I, I, he did do a good job, and I love him, but I had problems for ten years, I struggled, and I, I think I could have benefited from, hey, you're not a bad person if you have a beer. I think that would have been wise advice that I could have helped me as a kid.
Well, okay, say things, say things. Jill, heard your presentation, good, thank you, David. Guess what, I'll get a personal note, I beat up county manager who helped raise, he's definitely bad in the room, so this has been one of my, you know.
Oh, I have one thing, I wrote it down real fast, if I can, and because people have been saying good quotes, and I wanted to say this, and I appreciate y'all not being a homogenized board. My quote is, "When we avoid difficult conversations, we trade short-term discomfort for long-term dysfunction." So keep having tough conversations.
You got it, brother. All right, heard your presentation, gentlemen, what's your favorite board? When we have situations like this and there is a failure or a motion, the topic at hand is tabled.
Okay.
With that being said, next item is?
Yes, sir.
You and I have met a couple of times, Main Street in Franklin, the area we're talking about right now.
Yes, sir.
I was walking in front of people the other day with a friend, we were having lunch, and what's the lady nose down, coming off the street in the front of Outdoor Seventy-Six, fifty-six-year-old, boom, tripped on that. Excuse, our excuse we have to recur on Main Street, and it knows down in the sidewalk. Slapdastique. We have got to do something from funeral home to the top-down hill. Part of that is controlled by the county, and I don't know the dis, more than ours. Part of it is controlled by the town. We have got to come together, and I've, I've met with other, it's just like I said about the issues at the school, it's, it's going to happen. So tonight, we talked about this thing, it's, it's, that's the heart of Franklin, that's the heart of Macon County. We can do better, we've got money. On a point, Derek, representing the county as the lead person to bring to this board a proposal, either that includes a design, a proposed design, a budget, and rather than just doing county property, please encourage, we would love to partner, and we try, we will do the, the gazebo, or not the gazebo, instead of the clock tower?
Yeah.
That's a block.
We're going to work with Job Corps to get that room all fixed up and.
We have a tendency to neglect things, so I'm inviting y'all to join us to see what we can do from funeral home to top-down hill with our streets. Handrails, designated ingress, egress down the street, I mean, we've got it there right below the gazebo, we have a rail. I've sat on that rail a lot of times. That controls, I mean, it's ingress, egress. So if we can continue that on down the street, primarily on the outdoor set, well, people's sign, that's what I call it. But whatever needed it, I'm going to put Derek in charge of that, and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
Sounds like a plan.
Let me just throw something out. I mean, shouldn't we hire a design professional?
We'll ask Derek for it then. Two minutes.
Whatever it is. I'm just saying, I want to think outside, I want somebody who does it, who designs these for a living to, to give us something special, instead of just saying, well, we can put a handrail, and I like where you're going, but I think there are people who do this for a living, make a life, that have concepts that.
And I met with an individual that does this for a living, but I've got no response, and I'm, I'm abiding in nature, you're out pushing trees down, so we get, I'm toward Derek with that. Bring us something, we want to get this thing fixed.
Is this, is this a ADA, is this proposal, is it going to be ADA-focused? Is it beautification-focused? What, what are we, what are we looking for?
Whatever we get out of the, whatever we get out of it.
I think it's probably going to have to be both, Derek.
And what does the, what is the, forgive me, I should know this. What ability does the county have to do anything with sidewalks?
I don't think much. I think, I think y'all can do a match, but your match is higher than ours.
That's what I was, I was thought all that was covered by the town and then the Pell Grant.
But in our defense, we rode DOT as hard as we could for the past decade to get downtown done, it.
It, stuff is happening. Downtown is getting better sidewalk access-wise. We've been putting in better ramps and some curbing, even some bull bouts to help slow people down. Back to the county-owned squares, I think traditionally, traditionally, our boards haven't gotten along, but I think we get along like wildfire now. Like, we're doing great and that's good. That's healthy. But the town leasing the square and using the square for events and stuff like that and the county owning it, it's, it's been like the Spider-Man meme where everybody's pointing at each other just around a circle like, oh, who's going to pay for it? Well, the town traditionally has been hesitant to pay for it because it's not ours and we get dictated how we can use it, so we're going to be somewhat hesitant to fund it. And in your defense, well, the town uses it, so they should be the ones that do the infrastructure build-out. So yeah, let's get past that. Let's figure it out either.
We don't, we don't want that to be a felony crime. I mean, we've tried to get a library in Anahela and that library for 14 years. And I didn't hear most of that. This, we just, we need to get this done.
Golly, fuck.
And have we to do a place for it. It's like building a high school. We don't know how high school is going to cost. Everyone, we just guess.
We'll take land donations and then we'll do the build-out if you want us to.
It'd be an option. It'd be an option. Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
What time's her last call?
I think we've missed it.
I do want to say something. Now that we're getting various. I used Mr. Buppa in the town board of writing a citation to Mr., well, a miscellaneous farmer for his cow getting out. And I was embarrassed to know that we wrote the ticket. And I had accused him in the town board. I was going to get all over him about writing Farmer McPoy a ticket, a public nuisance for his cow getting out. And we wrote the ticket.
We did, we did.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that.
We did that deal. All right. So we're allowed to hear. Discussion and consideration of bench for two parcels in Cartagey, Cartagey, Creek Campground.
Yes, we received, offer the attorney has the paperwork on it. I'd like to get him to review that with you all.
Okay, so the county received an offer, two parcels in Cartagey. This is property that the county foreclosed upon just last year to deed into the county. We've done this in October of 2022. Taxes owing at that time. For the two parcels, it were $15,725. That's what the county's back taxes were on it. The tax value on it is for the first lot, that's pin number 6553850133. The tax value is $17,620 for the lot. There is a house that is probably not built to code, but there is a house located on it. It wouldn't be renovated. And then there's an adjoining lot that the county's tax rate value is at $15,000 for the lot. And that pin number is 6553850151. The combined total tax value therefore is $32,620. The offer is $4,000 for this lot for a total of $8,000. I think that the property, the substantial is based upon the end real estate attorney in the area. I think that the property is certainly worth the county tax rate value. I agree.
We need action?
No, you can just decline to comment or you can make a public announcement. But again, that it's pretty much been the board's policy that it would consider bids on surplus property that are equal, at least equal to the county tax rate. That's been the stance at least as long as I've been the county attorney. And so if you want to reiterate that to the public, then hopefully get that along. I do think that that is a property that could be renovated and be worth substantial enough.
It's been our policy as a board, this is the last couple of years, that we, if someone's interested in buying surplus property, that we start at the tax value. And I don't see why I'll just go find it. Gentlemen, anybody? All right. Discussion and consideration of resolution. It's a voice you couldn't leave. A resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Veterans Service Director Lee Holbrooke. And for everybody here who's been to the tents, we should have been since this past week. We have veterans today and this is the lady in Macon County that puts it all together. We thank you veterans who serve and we thank you lady for what you do to support the guys.
Thank you. And thank you Chairman Hickton and Commissioner Shields for being in our program and thank you both for your service. I know everybody's tired, but you need to listen to this, okay? It's important. Whereas the residents of Macon County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Macon County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. Whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that 44.7, excuse me, 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans. And whereas Macon County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Macon County hereby declares for Veterans Day, November 11th, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Macon County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their place of business or residence.
Let's put that into a motion. The resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. And that's a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners program.
Let's take a minute. Discussion, gentlemen? Suicide, veterans, we have homeless veterans. This makes me sick. I'm on rent now. I've got to beat some bucks. What our homeless veterans go through, homeless people generally, particularly veterans, what they've given this country. They stood up for the call. And I heard of this more than eight thousand suicides annually amongst veterans.
Well, the numbers, the VA, the numbers that the VA says versus what the CD says don't exactly match up. And the VA wants you to think that, or veterans of veterans want you to think that suicides decreased during COVID when in fact that doesn't seem to be the trend at all. It was worse. Yeah.
It's just, we just don't ever get anything. We've been presented with a lot of issues and I'm on a problem. I don't have answers. And that's what's frustrating with being in a late edition. I'm there, man. I do appreciate what you're doing. I wish we had your facilities for your office. We talked about that before. There's so many services out there, not just the veterans and homeless population, but everybody in general needs to have the people hurt. It's hard to handle. Thank you, Lee. We have a motion taken. Anybody have discussion, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say one thing real quick? When we're talking about the sidewalks, the sidewalks for us has been a major issue because there is no egress or whatever the word is. For a veteran to get off. So the handicap spot, and they're working on that now, but I still don't think it's right. It doesn't, I mean, it's, the crosswalk has been moved, but if we have a veteran that comes into our office, I mean, if they get out of the car and if you've got someone holding that wheelchair, the last thing you want them to do is turn to go downtown hill to come around, and that's what they have to do now or go all the way up the street. So that's a major issue for us.
And parking itself is an issue, even if they're lucky enough to find a parking place. Might want to go to the flower bed if they're, you know, park space now, have a flower bed.
I actually, you can ask Christie, I actually followed a business owner down the street today and asked them to move their vehicle because they park in front of my office every day. And I said, look, this is a, I actually, I called. I didn't go in their business. But I immediately went back to my office and called and I said, look, this is, you know, there's a handicap spot, but there's also a spot here. We park behind the building or across the street. As a business owner, if you want to park on Main Street, park in front of your business, but don't park in front of my office. So they were, they were agreeable. And I just want to tell you guys too, our tiny little office doesn't really get, I don't think people realize the impact. As of the 2022 GDX report for benefits last year, our two-person office brought in $23,979 in tax-free money to this county. $23 million. And that's just two of us. So.
No matching funds required either?
No, no grants, no matching funds, no overhead. Yeah.
We got a motion in a second. I will play a seat. Kind of raise your hand. That's regular. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Lee. Thank you more ways than one. Okay, gentlemen, we'll move on to new business. Discussion and consideration of resolution request. The North Carolinians Legislature to revise the Macon County Board of Commissioners election system to allow candidates in all districts to run for county commissioner every two years. This has been something I've talked about for a number of years and brought it up before previous boards and shot down this, Neil saying we've heard here tonight, being broken off, fixing. Well, it's broken back in 1978. They changed it back then. It's 45 years ago. All we've got, and I mean real brief, and I'm going to read the resolution. The three, this is a method of elections for county commissioners. Macon County, we have. We're a district at large. It means that the candidate must live in a particular district, one, two, or three, and he's voted on at large. Everybody in the county is to vote for him. So what we, what we're requesting the legislature to do is to give us authority by passing a local bill to design a way that's equal to every citizen in Macon County on their ability to seek elected office on the Board of Commissioners. District one has one, John Sherrill Highlands has one candidate. He can only run for office every four years. Now the district three, Anahela, I can run for office every four years. We have three candidates from district two with standard terms. They can run for office every two years. What we're proposing is to go to three districts. That's the way it used to be before 1978. And two at-large seats, standard terms, meaning that beginning in 2026, one of the, there will be two districts, two seats up for election. One of those will just file as an at-large seat. Doesn't matter. If you're good, you're going to get elected. So beginning in two years, anyone who wants to seek to office, candidates. But anyway, that's my recommendation. That's, we have a resolution to that effect. If you all had time, hopefully look through your agenda and review it. Since I brought up the resolution, I'm going to make a motion to the way you sent the resolution to North Carolina House of Representatives and senators for review and hopefully a local bill.
I second that, Jerry.
Second, motion second, gentlemen. Further discussion?
So we have now, Gary Shields feels comfortable with that. And so he will vote double away on your recommendation. I like the system we have now. I think we're all together. We have a few jobs to do. As a member, I don't understand the whole thing. I understand what we're going with now and Gary Shields.
You're in district two. You can run for office in two years. I'm in district three. I can only run every four years or make a head or none.
I read, I read all of it, but I like the system I have down here at Shields.
This is your advantage?
Well, I feel like you have to get out of here and work. Then go to hell.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Yes, sir.
I'll make this really quick. And Chairman, I did tell you I support listening to her often, but I agree with what you're saying. It's fair. I think that's fairness is key. And when we talked about it last year, you had one member at large. Guess what I'm concerned with and I like, I like where you're going with this is if we go to a three-district system, it not have to be equal in population. So representation in Anahela and Highlands, I mean, potentially you could have Highlands kiss the Franklin border just because of population between Buck Creek, Walton Creek, and the gap on the Miller Road. Am I wrong in saying that? Same for Anahela. Anahela would come all the way into just about town. I like the member at large. I like where you're going, but I wonder if there's a way to stagger. I'm the odd member out. I'm the guy who gets the one seat on the staggered term on the district two. I'm happy to be, you know, with the other two gentlemen in district two. And you guys could be the, you know, dissecting those who are all every four years. You know, fairness is what I'm about. But I worry about changing this and then having Highlands come back here. Furthermore, the first time I saw this resolution was Friday when the agenda was presented. I just feel like this needs to go to public hearing. There needs to be public discussion, public input. And before we print a bill and present it and sign it to Raleigh, I feel like it's my duty to at least ask for public involvement and give consideration to the public before I pass this. I do see where you're going and I do like that. So I want to make sure it's clear. I'm not trying to, you know, put off the rails here, but I feel like I want to really go through this.
Well, we mattered around even on when we're at here. We talked about it. But one at-large seat won't work because that would be a four-year term. It has to take a minimum of two at-large. There are other ways we can do this. You can go all at-large. We let everybody, or we do it periodically. There's a lot of election methods. And I've passed it out in previous meetings, the methods, methodology of letting county commissioners. So I'm just, I'm just pulling this out there. I don't, I think right now it's very unfair. Yes, this affects district two because it's three members. Three members control this county. And I don't think that did I adhere to both of the, hey, I'm in district two. I'm old voter history. When I joined it just on Thursday, I'm for district one, but this affects district two. That's it. Have you all want to do this? Good to be, they should be changed. I brought it up before and he said, well, if they broke, don't fix it. Well, it ain't broke. It's not fair. It's not, we're living in a era of equity, a dishonesty.
I do like where you're going, but I just feel like I want to have more public involvement. Maybe this is the appropriate time to ask for public engagement before we draft this. Maybe that's what we do, you know, see what, see what our options are and have discussion.
I like the idea of making this fair for everybody, but also I do agree with Commissioner Young to get input from the public because it is a big deal. But I do feel like it should be fair across the board and not just the way it's set up. The way it's set up right now, it's not fair because in our district, this might be limited to years. But for the both of you, that locks that seal for four years. We won't get into anything for even four years. So, and we got into one of the few counties left. So, and we got into one of the few counties left that's being mistaken, everybody.
Oh, I don't know, there, there are many different election methods, and I've not looked at, I discussed that, so, but whatever, you know, I see that. I made a motion, made a second. We're discussing now.
It is very unfair the way the commissioners are elected. And I was primary by Mr. Willis, which would make it very in county commission. And I read, I had an independent on the general election. Both of those candidates are done until 2026. The person that served on this board in our election can run in 2024. And so therefore, through this whole process, the, actually, the state legislative body can introduce a local bill without any action of this board. It's a very unfair election process to the citizens of Macon. It has been, just like Chairman Higgins said. District three, you can only seek that office every four years. District one, only four years. District two, every two years. It's an unfair election process, and what this resolution that we're, that has been motioned and seconded, is the fact that we recognize an unfair election process in Macon County, and we would like the state legislative body to look at this and give us their opinion on this. As in redrawing the districts, yes, it would have to be as equal in population for all three districts. And it would have to be ultimately, it would have to be redrawn by equal fashion. But at the same time, this, it's unfair to the citizens of Macon, that's wanting to seek selection, that can't do every, every four years.
We got a motion to say.
I'll just say one thing, and I mean, if it was presented like that, Mr. Sherrill, I could probably support that. But I feel like the way it's presented right here contradicts what you said, so for that reason, you know, I don't have a problem with the state looking into more fair measures. And I'm 100% for that, but I feel like what we have here, I'd like to hear from Highlands and Anna Hala, I think it's gonna hurt both of them. I feel like it's gonna hurt your district.
Well, it's gonna enlarge the district.
Highlands is the largest tax revenue we have in the world, and I feel like they need representation that's local to Highlands, that way. Right. I mean, the way it's presented right here, I would very likely represent Highlands, the way you have it drafted right here.
I don't see anything in here how it's, there's nothing in here suggesting, other than the fact that we're gonna, that we recommend to at-large. We can't do anything. This board, we cannot change any of this stuff. The state body has to do it. However, this, the other way that this could be done is, this could be put on a referendum, which would cost a lot of money, and you would let the voters do it without any input from the state, the state body. This right here is saying that we recognize an unfair setup in Macon County. Would you please look into this? And that's, that's basically what this resolution is, is saying, we can't, we can't change it. The state has to do it on local basis.
So that you're making a difference in your district?
No. They, if they go into a local bill, they have to present a local bill in the General Assembly and have this approved in Raleigh. And then once they approve that there is a problem, then it comes back to us. Yes, we agree that that is an unfair system in Macon County. Then it's up to us to go forward with this process. There is, and I'm not trying to get the, and I'm not saying the public should not be involved in this. It is not, it is not a requirement, number one. The legislative body can do this without any action from us, and they can send it back and say, and I question, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I question the legality of this, knowing that district two can run every two years, while district one and district three can only seek the office every four years. I question that, it's unfair, and I have spoken to our representatives, and at the same time, and they agree, there's a problem here.
So voting on this night doesn't make it the last one, it just sets the precedent for them to consider.
That's correct, that's correct. We have to, we, they would like to see action by this board, in order to, to present this on a local bill in Raleigh. They can do this in a short session. This will not come into play, if it's approved, will not come into play until 2026 is over. And so this is no final say-so in this, in this resolution.
Chairman Adams, we talked about it a few years ago. We've got a motion, second on the floor. All fair and equal, raise your right hand. Three, all opposed, like sign. Three to two, that's ridiculous, thank you, gentlemen. All right, we're down to L under new business. Discussion, consideration of resolution, supporting the identification of party affiliation for candidates for Macon County Board of Elections. Commissioner Sherrill.
Thank you, Chairman. In the 2022 election, we had a school board candidates, and in that, they were from the same, the same party, and even though it's a nonpartisan issue, when the Republican, the Macon GOP handed out sample ballots, it identified the school candidate, school board candidates as Republican. So what happened was, in that election, we had two Republicans running for the same seat in school board. People were going in, voting for the two Republicans for the same seat, getting ballots back out, and the voter had a choice at that time to redo their entire ballot, or make their vote for that school board seat voided. And most of the people chose not to redo their ballot, which tossed the candidates a fair election. So this is on the same premises of that, we identified a problem with the school board. Meanwhile, approximately 50 school districts in the state of North Carolina, 115, 116 districts, are identifying school board races as partisan. And so in this, we have the resolution, and we're simply asking the state leaders to introduce the local bill, to make Macon County School Board races a partisan entity as well. I think this, I think the school board, you know, I had some emails come in and said that, you know, the school system should not be considered a political arena, but I'm sorry, but everything that we encounter every day is driven by politics. I go to church, it's politics in church, everything else. This is not to change the face of the board or anything like that, I just simply think the, the school board candidates should be partisan, and they should be premieres.
I guess, I guess in my situation, I'd say the opposite. I think the, having been a board of education member for a year, party politics was not an issue because we didn't allow it to get there. I'm gonna say this, and I don't think it's gonna get a lot of work with the thing, but politics is nasty, and there may be another word for that. I think board of education is a different, they're elected and they're on board, and they have a different responsibility, because it's education. And when you put the politics in there, it gets me a little muddy. And so I oppose it, because number one, I'm gonna use Mr. Higgins' comment there a while ago, he said he had no opportunity to discuss, and he was talking about discussing, and I had no opportunity to discuss with board of education, this concept. And when I, when I did have, when the agenda went out, I did have an opportunity to, I felt, I went to see the person and say, did I miss a meeting? They didn't know what I was talking about. So I think it's, for me, it's unfair for them not to have a voice in this. I'm gonna tell you, just like your emails, my email's been full of people's opinions about this. It goes back again, what Mr. Young was talking about, we are two boards, we got to communicate with each other. For them, for this to be happening, and us, I'm gonna say us, for them not to have an input into it, I have a problem with it. I have a conscious problem with that. And so my vote will be not to make it partisan, because I'm not being disrespectful, that's just the way I'm being, that's the information I'm giving back. And we all know, we sit here today, it can get contentious when it comes into politics. You can lose the rhythm of what you're there for. And she knows what she's there for, it's about education. But see, the Macon County Commissioners, you have multiple jobs that you have to see and look at. But when you're an education, board of education member, you're focused on one thing, and you can't afford to have a disruption of a political thing to derail your thoughts on education. And I'm, that's just the way I feel, as board of education member, I feel that way too. And I always, I'll support them being a nonpartisan situation. Gary Shields, thank you for this.
So I'd like to say, personally, I do feel like it should be partisan. However, I don't feel like, I think it should be taken until we can actually speak to the school board, you know, members themselves. And it's not a good thing for us to be voting on this right now, there's hardly anybody, even inside of Deidre here, to represent, you know, say for the school board. You know, none of them are there too. So I think as a professional courtesy, we should have some discussion with them, okay? Could it change everybody's opinion? Impossible, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, as a professional courtesy, I think we should have a discussion with them, because this is considered a difficult. So that's what I'm saying.
And I appreciate that, I mean, I respect that. I'm trying to clear up a problem that should never happen in the election process. We should not have, I mean, if you look at the judges, what the state did with the state judges and everything, they made that partisan to clear up an election process. The process that we're facing right now is the fact that we had a terrible event happen aboard elections in that last election. And a lot of people, votes did not count, because there was a mistake. And I'm just trying to say, let's not let that happen again. Let the board members, I mean, hey, it could happen the same thing as Democrats as it did to Republicans. And so, and it's just a matter of fairness, so that we don't have this issue come back up again.
Politics is involved in everything, I've heard that. I know, it is a politics, it is a politics involved, but we don't sit here on this board and say, hey, we're Democrats, we're Republicans, we're independents, whatever, let's go do this. But if you're afraid to put, if you're afraid, if you're running for political office, you expect people to vote for you and vote for your ideas, and you're ashamed to put what your party affiliation is on it, I don't know, I got a problem with that individual. But y'all, what do you think? I mean.
Me and Mike two says, I just feel like, again, the first time I saw this document was when the agenda was published, and I haven't left official. Chairman, it reminds me of the comments you made earlier about 70, $7 million.
We have to present somewhere. Did you?
Well, where's the public, where's the public discussion we're talking about? Where's the public hearings? Where's all the public involvement?
We're ruling hearings for these requests.
Can I just finish my point I'm trying to make? We're ruling with an iron fist right here. We're talking about government overreach, well, it happens on both sides. I mean, look, John talks about the will of the people, let's put it out for the will of the people. I don't like the government, I don't like politicians, I don't even like politics, I hate all of it. I, I don't even know why I'm sitting here. I sit here because I love Macon County, and I signed up to make Macon County a better place, and here we are, making everybody, label yourself before you walk in. Who am I to make another board label themselves? Put it on a referendum. Talk about the will of the people, put it, put it out there. I don't mind, let me finish. I don't mind to keep, to keep, you know, big-ticket items, people, as the gentleman came a few months ago and talked about us being a Democratic Republic, not a democracy. He's right, they elect the five of us to make decisions on behalf of 30,000 people, because there's not a time for 30,000 people to make a tally on every mark. I don't mind to make a budget, a fiscal decision, but this is something to me, it's, we'll pass it on to the state, and I don't care, let the people pass it on to the state. But to come in here on Friday, pass it on Tuesday, everything else has public hearings, everything else has public discussion, public input. The school board ain't even in town, it's got a really bad vibe to it, and it doesn't pass the smell test to me, so I just want to clear there.
Well, okay, and I respect that, Josh, but here, again, this resolution does not finalize anything. It simply states that Macon County has identified an election problem, that we would like their input, and if they agree that there is a problem, and it should be done, then they will pass a local bill in Raleigh on the state, Senate floor and the House floor, and then it will come back to us. We can't do this. This is, this is the, this is the state, we are asking them to look at it and see if they agree. However, there are 50 districts in this, in this state that have already done this. And so 50 districts have approved this to be, so we're being transparent of who we are? You talking about transparency? There is no public comment session for this that's required by law. It is simply saying this board would like the state leaders to look at this, and if they agree or don't agree. There is no public comment session. Now, this, this is just what I see, and I'll go with whatever this board, I just think that, that we need to clear it up.
But what does that have to do with Democratic Republicans?
Sorry?
Because you're talking about a spage here, I'm, I'm talking about that they should not have to identify themselves, board of education not have to identify themselves as Republicans or, or party affiliation. You lost me, I thought you lost me there, when you said they don't make that decision, they don't make a decision on what party you're in.
Commissioner Shields, the biggest thing here, and like I said before, we had two Republicans seek, board of elections seat, or I mean, school board seat, okay? When the Republican Party sent out the sample ballot, as you're walking through the door, would you like a Democrat ballot, or would you like a Republican ballot? Oh, I like a Republican ballot. They had every person on that ballot marked, including the school board. So when the people went in there that took a Republican ballot, they voted for every Republican that Macon GOP had placed on that sample ballot. When those people voted, and they put it in a machine and kicked it out, it was an illegal ballot, or it was an unapproved ballot. The people had a choice. Get a new ballot, start all over, or don't make your vote count, or not count in that district for the school board. And so the Democrats did the same thing. The Democrats had their sample ballots marked with every Democrat that was on there, running for, for all the offices. on there, running for all the offices. There was only one Democrat. The next time, there may be two Democrats and one Republican.
When I went to the election office the other day and asked for the ballot that they had for the last election, there was no identification for the Board of Education being Democrat or Republican. And I've got, I've got it downstairs.
That, for the official ballot, that is correct.
Let me just say one more thing before we close this. I mean, I don't think that's a political issue. I think that's an issue between Board of Election and then basic understanding how to read instructions. When you have your ballot that says, please vote one from the, whatever, like if you look, ballot says it, I feel like that's not an issue that we need to take on as a board.
Okay, I get that. Last November, at Commissioner Antoine's house, before we were all sworn into office, we had many meetings about this very same thing. Partisans go board, redistrict in this county. What has changed? Nothing has changed with the conversations we've had.
But I mean, what did I say about it, John?
That you.
This is getting really, really personal right now. We're on, listen, listen.
So, listen, this comes down to two things at this.
I'm just saying what, I mean.
I'm going to hold on this tonight, table it. And honestly, again, as a professional courtesy, it's not right in my eyes that we shouldn't be trying to vote on something without having had a discussion with the board to be questioned, which is the school.
Okay.
I say a lot of questions.
I mean, I mean, we talked about this in there.
John, I'd like for you to put words in my mouth, but there's, I didn't go, I didn't say anything about that. We had discussions. We had a lot of discussions. There's a lot of crazy conspiracy discussion that was passed out there too. And I'm not supporting any of that either.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I mean, really.
Okay.
We can get in the weeds all we want to do.
We can't call a question. We didn't have a motion.
Then it fails.
Oh, I didn't have a motion. I just think there's the.
Clear, we have a motion, everything on this. Had no action on this.
No action.
Is it going, is it back on the agenda next month?
I mean, whatever we need.
Obviously, it's going to pass, so.
Let me ask one more thing. When is this board going to take on any issues that actually really matter to the people of Macon County? All we're doing is playing in the weeds. That's under your direction.
Give your recommendation.
Let's, let's, the high school, school capital needs. We sit right here, if you want to play getting in the weeds right here. You talk about not spending money at the middle school, but you want to go to Main Street and start fixing Main Street. It has nothing to do with this, with our actual tax dollar. That's the DOT, as John puts, and the town of Franklin. So, we sit on this court and contradict ourselves every day. And if we're going to play, start calling everybody out, let's just start calling spades, spades. Let's get rid of our pet projects, and let's worry about the county as a vote. What's happening right now, we have a pet project that you guys sat in meetings with the attorney about that nobody else on this board knew about, and you come before the meeting expecting me to pass this, we've been talking about that before the election.
Well, we didn't.
I didn't, I don't recall any of this. We, we had discussions. We talked for weeks, John, about everything.
I know, and you.
You get hung up on a political issue that has to do with labeling other elected bodies. That's national politics. You're driving into this community to divide us.
I'm not dividing anybody.
Okay, well, let's bring this back in public session for the schools so they can.
You like that, Sheriff Manager?
This is not a divisive thing here, folks.
Look at me right there with that.
Hey, brothers, this is not a divisive thing. This is just simply as far as the school board is. And yes, I want to get those things we mentioned in that. Why don't we not get anything done?
Why don't we fix the Senator Anaheimla? Let's fix it.
I'm proud of you. What happened? Have you heard it tonight?
Listen, brother, listen, why don't you take leadership and say, I'm the 20, I'm the 35 year senator. You're the chairman.
I'm the chairman. It is not, we hire people to do these. We don't go out and do the job. We have professionals that we hired to do this.
We've been here too long. Let's go home.
I know. All right. All right. Let me see here, gentlemen.
Thank motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. Consent agenda. Has anybody reviewed consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Please report.
Second.
Who made the motion? If you made a motion second, I'll pay it. Back to you now, sleep. Page 13, 14, closed session. Motion to adjourn, Allen.
Who made the motion and who seconded it, please?
Gary made it. I seconded.
On adjournment?
Yeah, I make the motion.
Who seconded it?
I seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for watching.
Your signature, sir.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you all for watching. It's obviously going to be a little bit before I can get the full video out. So, we'll call it quits here. This is Bobby with Macon Media signing off.